During the current state of emergency due to COVID-19, council members will be participating online and the public will not be able to physically attend today's meeting. To participate in the general public comment period, please call now at 818-238-3335. Members of the public may speak for up to three minutes depending upon the number of speakers.
Good evening and welcome to a regular Burbank City Council meeting on Tuesday, March 15, 2022. I have invited Sandra George, Executive Assistant in the City Council Office, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Will everyone, everyone please rise? Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam City Clerk, please conduct the roll call.
Thank you. Councilmember Frueros.
Oh, it's great to be back in Burbank and not in Washington, DC. Good to see everybody.
Thank you. And Councilmember Schultz.
Present.
Councilmember Springer.
Yes, here.
Vice Mayor Anthony.
Present, thank you.
Mayor Telemontes.
Present.
Thank you.
There will be one period of general public comment tonight. If you would like to participate, please call now at 818-238-3335. Callers will be placed in a queue until we begin public comment. We have one announcement this evening.
The following is an announcement for March 15, 2022. The Burbank City Clerk's Office is accepting applications for a total of three vacancies on the Burbank Water and Power Board. The first vacancy is for one unexpired term ending July 31, 2022. The second vacancy is for one unexpired term ending July 31, 2024. The deadline to submit an application for these two vacancies is Monday, March 21 at 5:00 PM. The third vacancy is for one unexpired term ending July 31, 2024. The deadline to submit an application for the third vacancy is Thursday, March 24 at 5:00 PM. If interested, apply online at burbankca.gov/BCCapplication. Vaccination proof or medical religious exemption will be required of all applicants. For more information, please contact the Burbank City Clerk's Office at 818-238-5851 or email cityclerks@burbankca.gov.
As a reminder, if you would like to participate in general public comment.
This concludes the announ-
Yes, as a reminder, if you would like to participate in a general public comment, please call now at 818-238-3335. Next is a presentation of a proclamation declaring March 31, 2022 as Caesar Chavez Day in the City of Burbank. Whereas in 1962, Caesar Chavez founded and led for almost three decades, United Farm Workers Union of America, which became a symbol of empowerment and hope for many farmworkers. And whereas under his stewardship, a broad coalition of unions, religious groups, students, minorities, and consumers joined together to pursue social justice. And whereas the values of Caesar Chavez include service to others, sacrifice, determination, nonviolence, respect for life, celebrating community, knowledge, innovation, and tolerance. And whereas the City of Burbank is home to Dolores Huerta Middle School, named after community organizer, labor leader, and civil rights activist Dolores Huerta, who with Caesar Chavez co-founded the National Farm Workers Association, a precursor to the United Farm Workers Union. Now therefore, I, JSA Telemontes, Mayor of the City of Burbank, do hereby proclaim March 31, 2022 as Caesar E. Chavez Day in the City of Burbank and encourage all citizens to celebrate Chavez's life and work by participating in community service projects. Accepting the proclamation this evening is Mrs. Amy Nevarrette. Amy grew up in Burbank and attended Disney Elementary School, then Jordan Junior High School, and Burrows High School, Indians. Amy owns Ballet Folklorico Mexico Esteca, a nonprofit folklorico dance academy in Burbank. The company operates a folklorico conservatory to 150 dancers ranging from ages two to adult. Amy has a personal connection to Mr. Caesar Chavez. Her older brother worked as a picketer in the farms in the city of Fillmore in the 1970s. As a teenager, Amy marched with the United Farm Workers of America in support of Mr. Chavez's goals of improving working conditions, raising pay, and providing health and care and education to farmworkers. Ms. Amy Nevarrette, welcome. Glad to have you here.
Ms. Nevarrette, can you unmute and turn on your camera? Actually, I will unmute you. Can you turn on your camera?
Yes. There we go. Hi, everybody. How are you?
Welcome.
First of all, I would like to say good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Manager, and everyone else. I am honored to receive the Caesar Chavez proclamation to recognize his efforts in bringing attention to Mr. Chavez's goals of protecting the rights of farmworkers in the entire United States of America. I would like to say thank you to the City of Burbank for recognizing the importance of continuing his legacy and saying, "Si se puede." To that extent, I'd like to also recognize that our city now has a school name after Mr. Chavez's partner, Mrs. Dolores Huerta. That school being David Starr Jordan Middle School. It is now the Dolores Huerta Middle School, whom she had the pleasure of coming to Burbank and actually being here in person to celebrate her day. I would like to dedicate this recognition first and foremost to my brothers David, Pepe, Antonio, Santiago, Rico Berto, Adan, Alejandro, and Juan Pablo. Yes, I have nine brothers. Each one of them continue to make exemplary contributions to the communities where they live. Next, I would like to recognize the 800,000 workers that work in the state of California. These women and men toll sunrise to sunset to bring and provide our daily consumption of fruits, vegetables, meat, and poultry. They power the economy and support our communities, whom during the pandemic did not waver. Farmworkers are essential workers, and we need more every day. All across the country, farmworkers spend extremely long hours harvesting crops in all kinds of weather. In recent years, in California, Oregon, and other states, they've also faced wildfires, record heat waves, in addition to COVID-19. All these men and women deserve protections, not just that label of essential. In closing, I'd like to say once again, thank you to each one of you, and I invite you to say thank you every time you eat apples, strawberries, corn tortillas, or when you enjoy a glass of merlot. And here is to Caesar Chavez's legacy. And I'd like to also recognize all my wonderful students that are here today celebrating with me. There's a few of them here, and they're very happy to be part of the celebration. And we're going to celebrate Mr. Chavez's birthday on March 26 by doing a performance, celebrating his birthday. So you're all invited to come and enjoy a celebration of service to others. Thank you very much for this recognition. Muchisimas gracias. Que Dios los bendiga. Y estoy aquí para atenderlos y servirles. Gracias.
Muchas gracias. Congratulations, and as well, thank you for sharing your family history. Nine brothers, Amy?
Yes, nine brothers.
And are you the baby? Are you the baby of the, all of them?
No, I'm number 13. I have, actually, there's 15 of us all together. So I'm number lucky 13, and I have over 150 nieces and nephews, and I'm so proud of all of them, and I'm just so grateful again to my brothers, especially because they have really, worked really hard to be who they are, and they continue to harvest and to teach, just like I do. Thank you so much.
No, you're welcome. Congratulations to the entire family, but especially your mom.
Thank you.
So thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Take care. The next item is the City Manager Report. City Manager Hess, do you have anything to report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have one item. I'd like to call up our Chief of Police, Mike Albanese. He has a special announcement related to the mental health and evaluation team.
Thank you. Welcome, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor Telemontes, Vice Mayor Anthony, Councilmember Frueros, Springer, and Schultz. I'd like to introduce Officer Anisha Kyles. She is one of our Met Officers. She's part of our co-response team, our co-response Met Team. They have initiated a new program that we wanted to share with City Council and the community. So I'm going to have Officer Kyles introduce her teammates and talk about the program very briefly.
Good evening, Mayor Telemontes, Vice Mayor Anthony, Councilmembers Springer, Frueros, and Schultz. I am Officer Kyles, and I stand here before you with my partners Sonia Casanova and Kelly Bravo-Cuvas. We are part of the Mental Health Evaluation Team, and we're here to present to you our new mental health awareness program, which we refer to as MAP. Last year, we learned that SIL Beach Police Department introduced a special needs sticker to their city, and we quickly realized that we needed a similar program. MAP was created to help educate first responders and citizens that they may be engaging with an individual who has a cognitive disability. With MAP, to start, it will consist of a reflective sticker that may be play, may be placed on vehicles and residences. We also understand that some families may want a more discreet options, which we are fa, which we are finalizing. With MAP, the ultimate goal is to continue to improve on how we respond and work with those who may be experiencing mental health concerns. For more information about the program, you can contact MET. And this concludes our presentation.
Great. Thank you very much. Very, very impressive. We're moving forward and just creating better, better, more successes as we move along. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Officer Kyles. Mr. City Attorney, will you please report on closed session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Members of the public, the City Council met in closed session this evening on two items. First item was City of Burbank versus Barfly Inc., a matter of existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1. Council took no reportable action. Council also met to discuss the City Manager's performance evaluation pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957. City Council took no reportable action.
Thank you, sir. Now is the time for general public comment. Members of the public may address the Council for up to three minutes on any matter concerning city business. Remember to lower the volume on your TV or computer and take your phone off speaker when you deliver a public comment. To participate, please call 818-238-3335. Madam City Clerk, do we have any callers on the line?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we're ready to go.
Thank you.
Cue my, my audio on the, on the video.
Our first caller is Jason Bennett.
Welcome.
Thank you, councilmembers. Good evening. I appreciate the sensitivity this evening. As an applicant for the Charter Review Committee, I just wanted to speak on my behalf to ask for your vote. As a, as an eight-year-long resident of Burbank, as a longtime poll worker for the state, I understand what it means to be, to participate in our civic life and to try and uphold the ideals of democracy that we have in our society. As a longtime software developer, though, I understand what it means to try and understand a system and try to fix it, or at least improve it. And that's what the Charter Review Committee is all about. It's about looking at a system, trying to understand it, and trying to fix it. And I believe that with my experience participating in civic life here in Burbank, as well as my work experience in trying to understand systems, I believe that I could bring a fair amount of value and experience to Charter Review Committee, and I would appreciate one of your votes tonight on my behalf. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our second caller is Wayne Klein.
Welcome.
Hello?
You're online.
Oh, it's Wayne. I'm Wayne. I, I'm Wayne. I accidentally disconnected myself. I accidentally disconnected myself when I tried to put it. Okay, all right. Anyway, I'm going to turn on mute here. Just a second. Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Council, first of all, my wife and I-
Mr. Klein, could you mute the other, your other, like your computer, your television? Because we're hearing-
I think it's on mute. I think it, oh, just a second. It's on the speaker. Just a second. I'm going to try to do it this way. Just a second here.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
We're going to put another speaker through until he calls back. We'll make sure he puts through. Well, they see him online, but yeah, he has not disconnected, so we're, we're trying to get him off them there. Our next caller is Andre Deonisian.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and the rest of City Council. My name is Andre Deonisian. I've lived in Burbank most of my life and was raised in this community. I'm a graduate of Burbank High and currently attend Pasadena City College as an economics major. I've applied to serve on the Charter Review Committee as I want to bring the perspectives of the newest generation of voters to the table. I believe the Gen Z is severely underrepresented in local governments across the country, and it's time for us to step up and do our part to help our communities. But more importantly, I want to see what can be done to simplify, streamline, and make more accessible the workings of our city government, such that every rep, every resident can easily understand and participate in the process without being saddled with the undue burdens of self-educating in the minutia of every issue. Government manuals should be more all-encompassing, easier to find, and subsequently comprehend. And such a policy must be at the core of our, of our city's design. I look forward to the opportunity to serve, and I thank you for your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next caller is David Donahue.
Welcome.
Thank you very much, Mayor Telemontes. I want to say thank you very much to Vice Mayor Anthony, Councilmembers Frueros and Springer and Schultz for all the wonderful work you're doing representing the constituents of the City of Burbank. I am calling in this evening to support consent to calendar item number seven. I think it's the work that Fred and Chupra have been doing to advocate for these changes. I'm all in favor of, they've been doing great work. Anything that could help streamline the construction process, I am a strong advocate of. My wife and I are currently building an accessory dwelling unit on our property here in Burbank. My wife and I, both are business owners, and we just want to be able to advocate for additional resources and opportunities to provide any level of streamlining. Thank you, Mayor, very much, and have a great evening.
Thank you.
Our next caller is Michelle Dominguez.
Welcome.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Michelle Dominguez. My pronouns are they/them/they're, and I'm a proud trans and non-binary Burbank resident. And I'm just calling in to support item N, introduction of an ordinance for a gender-neutral municipal code. I really hope I'm not being naive when I say I expect this to receive unanimous support from the Council, considering its compliance with equal protection. So I just want to thank you all in advance for your support. And then also move, moving forward to the next step, note some ways that we as a city can move beyond discompliance and towards a better quality of life for trans and folks of all genders in Burbank. I think we can start with employment. Unfortunately, there is disproportionate violence and discrimination against trans folks. The National Transgender Discrimination Survey showed that 90% were harassed or mistreated at work for being trans, or hid who they were in order to avoid that treatment. And 26% had lost a job because they were trans. I'm wondering if Burbank can be a city that develops or funds programs like the Transgender Economic Empowerment Project housed at the LA LGGT Center. Also, transgender people face significant job loss and job fragility. We also have a rate of unemployment. Despite some protections that prohibit discrimination, trans folks continue to encounter barriers to healthcare. Even when we have access to comprehensive coverage, discrimination is still prevalent in many healthcare settings and contributes to health disparities, such as higher levels of HIV infection and suicidality. Have you ever read a Know Your Rights Guide for Trans People Navigating COVID-19? If the answer is no, then that's certainly a privilege. Can Burbank be a city where we fund transgender-specific suicide prevention and health promotion for its citizens and youth? I know homelessness is also a hot topic in Burbank and one of the citywide goals for the year. Folk are a critical issue that disproportionately impacts trans folks. One in five trans individuals have experienced homelessness at some point in their lives, including myself. Family rejection, discrimination, and violence have contributed to the fact that an estimated 40% of youth experiencing homelessness are trans and LGGT identified. Can Burbank be the city where we develop or fund programs providing emergency housing and services to each community? There are other actions that can be done. Can we be a place where we appoint or hire openly trans people, colored as a city? Can we hire full-time staff to support our city advancing justice and inclusion? Can we update building codes to increase the requirements for single-stall accessible restrooms so that I have a place to go back in next time I'm in community service? More questions I hope we'll begin to address at beginning of the important step to update the municipal code for gender inclusion. Let's be a city that goes beyond the minimally global climate necessary and instead strives to set an example for a thriving justice-centered community for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next caller is Jamie Keizer.
Welcome.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Councilmembers. Tonight, I'm calling in to support Gloria Solis for a seat on the Municipal Charter Review Committee. I have had the privilege of working with Gloria in the Burbank community in a variety of capacities over the years. I feel incredibly fortunate to serve alongside her and align on many pressing issues facing women and the overall community. I'm a proud member of the Zonta Club of Burbank, and we're a volunteer organization working to empower women through service and advocacy. Gloria is also a member, who is an advocacy, is the advocacy chair, and an immediate past president. She is a leader who is present. She rolls up her sleeves and has a voice for change. I will be joining her this Friday on the front steps of City Hall, where she will be honored as the Woman of the Year by Assembly Member Laura Friedman. Gloria is well-equipped to serve on the Municipal Charter Review Committee and provide governance standards for the city's charter. With her hands-on investment on many community boards and her leadership acumen, she is the perfect choice. I hope you will join me and support this amazing leader, Gloria Solis, as a member of the Municipal Charter Review Committee. Thank you, City of Burbank members, for your consideration, and thank you, Gloria, for your endless leadership and service to Burbank.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Paul Dyson.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Telemontes, and good evening to you, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers, Paul Dyson. As you know, I'm applying to fill the open seat on the Airport Authority. I do so based on my five decades of experience in business ownership, corporate management, and all modes of transportation. I would like to put that experience to work on behalf of you, the City Council, and the people of Burbank by representing the city on the Airport Authority. I'd be joining Emily Gable-Luddy and Bud Overham, two strong and experienced commissioners, and I believe my particular skills would complement them to make a strong team for Burbank. Thank you for the opportunity to be of service and for your consideration tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Our next caller is Jim Casey.
Welcome.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Jim Casey. I'm a 23-year resident of Burbank, a local realtor, and I head up an organization most of you are familiar with, Preserve Burbank. Our group, with over 400 residents, was responsible for the IDCO in 2015 and worked hand-in-hand with staff to draft the design guidelines that are on the chopping block this evening. In 2015, between 12 and 15 homes a year were being torn down and replaced with enormous structures that lacked any architectural context or scale in comparison to the surrounding neighborhood. Neighbors were waking up to the ground-shaking and noise of bulldozers that were undermining their own homes and severing gas lines. The IDCO and the design guidelines were created to encourage compatibility with the surrounding homes and to slow down the process, so that neighbors could be alerted to a proposed project and would be able to appeal it before the bulldozers came to scrape the lot. Thousands of Burbank residents spent thousands of hours giving input and feedback over a two-year process that had over 40 live events and a website survey to assist staff in writing the design guidelines. The city spent over a quarter of a million dollars on outside consultants to assist in the creation and teaching of staff how to implement these guidelines. Tonight, you're being asked to make an impossible decision. We have had a team of residents scouring over the 60 pages of revisions, and many of us participated in the quote-unquote "public forum" two weeks ago. Not only was there zero back and forth, many questions went unanswered, and it appears nothing in the ZTA before tonight has changed since that meeting. Therefore, it was a complete waste of time and resources to pay staff to simply back down questions for two hours. Frankly, it's appalling. Not once have the residents had an opportunity to- Not once have the residents had an opportunity to weigh in on these changes or present any evidence to City Council about how well the design guidelines are working. COVID-19 has every one of our neighboring cities scrambling to catch up with permit applications. They are addressing it by adding staff, adding hours at the counter for plan checks, and reconsidering their internal procedures, not throwing out the code book to appease what Fred Ramirez said was less than 10 projects a year. How can 10 teardowns hold up over 600 smaller permit requests is beyond me, and no one should be touching the codes until an analysis of the planning department processes is completed. Perhaps it's time to bring in more outside consultants again. Our vote is no. Table any further discussion on this topic until we can hold live, in-person work sessions with staff before we throw the design guidelines, which the residents feel are working extremely well, out the window. Our answer is no.
Thank you.
The next caller is Greg Aslanian.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council Members. It's ironic that I be the person to follow up the last caller as I am calling in support of the zoning code amendments. I am a homeowner and a lifelong 35-plus-year resident of the city of Burbank. My family has been residents of Burbank even longer and own homes in the city of Burbank. I've currently been embroiled in a very long process to try to remodel and reshape my home to best fit my family's current needs. My home is very small presently, and, you know, I've been in the process since August of 2020 to try to obtain permits, and I'm still chugging along with no idea how long it's going to take. My wife and I were very careful in selecting a designer who was extremely familiar with the Burbank building codes, zoning laws, and all the parameters required to construct what we had envisioned. Even still, it's taken that long. Part of the problem, as I've come to understand it, is that a lot of the zoning laws and building code sections are subjective in nature. And even though any designer and architect and planner can help craft a home to fit the parameters that are there in black and white, there still is quite a bit of hold-up and arbitrariness that's injected into the process that is holding the process up. I'm not alone. I've met several people who are in the same boat as I. As far as others who are concerned about enormous homes and things like that, as you know, the prior anti-McManusianization laws put an end to that. There are very strict parameters in how large a home can be. And to my understanding, that is not changing. It is more a process of streamlining this entire thing so that it doesn't take one and a half and probably more than two years just to get permits. Firsthand, I could tell you, construction costs from what we were being quoted at the outset of this entire process have over-doubled for me and my wife. We are working-class folks. We're not rich. We're not at the top of the hill. We're not planning on obstructing anyone's views or doing anything that some of these other folks who are opposed to these measures claim that we're attempting. We're simply trying to build a home that'll literally fit us better. As you know, Burbank is an older community, and the homes were built with, you know, different guidelines and insights in mind. Things are changing, and this process is really kind of dragging us along, and it seems endless. I don't, after, since August 2020, I don't even have a sign up at this point.
Thank you.
And that's just...
Thank you very much. Your three minutes are up. Next speaker?
Our next caller is Gloria Salas.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Telemontes, Vice Mayor Anthony, Councilmembers, and City Manager Hess. Here I am again, calling to ask that Burbank follow the lead of the city of Glendale and light up City Hall in the colors of blue and yellow in support of Ukraine. The war has worsened since the last time City Council convened, and every day, we're hearing of more civilians being killed. I am a member of Zonta Club of Burbank, which advocates fearlessly for women and girls. Women and children, as you know, will always bear the brunt of any war. I know this isn't a local issue, but it is a humanitarian issue, and I ask again that we show support for the Ukrainian people during this crisis. Since the blue and yellow lights have already been used to celebrate the Rams championship, perhaps for one night, we can show support for this country, Ukraine. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Our next caller is Gavin Cho.
Welcome.
Hi there. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Telemontes, Vice Mayor Anthony, and Councilmember Springer, Frutos, and Schultz. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you all. My name's Gavin Cho, and I'm a 20-year-old college student majoring in public policy, and I have applied to serve on the City Charter Review Committee. As a young person, I feel that I'm well-equipped to bring a fresh new perspective to the city. I've been a member of this community for my whole life, and I firmly believe that it's time to update our government systems to reflect the present moment. Local government plays a critical role in ensuring a strong, forward-looking future exists for generations to come. And I'll admit that because of my age, I may not be as well-connected as others, but what I lack in connections, I more than make up for in my passion for this city. I've never felt more called to serve the community that has given me so much than I do now. Serving on the Charter Review Committee would be an incredible honor. Once again, my name's Gavin Cho, and I feel that I'm ready to be the leader to bring about this change. Thank you all for your consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Our next caller is Ara Abrahamiin.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Telemontes, and honorable council members. Thanks for taking my time, taking the time to hear our opinions today. I'm calling in support of the Zone Text Amendment for Single Family Developments in Burbank. I participated in the last couple of council meetings on this topic, and I also participated in the community forum two weeks ago. I appreciate you guys organizing that venue for us to ask for the questions. I thought it was a fairly productive discussion, back and forth, hearing views on both sides. I'm just calling at this point to say just a couple of things. Firstly, I understand there's some concern about the changes to the code relative to what was done five years ago in 2017. Just to remind the council and also the public that's listening, the primary changes are to take within the guideline document and codify them and make them objective standards in the code. So we're not, we're not getting rid of what was done in 2017, and as opposed to that, we're actually making them more fundamental to the code itself. So I think, I think this is an improvement from where we are today. Secondly, I just implore the council to please reconsider the timeline here. We've already talked about this now for the third hearing, I believe, at the council level, and for those of us that have projects pending in the process, you know, the clock is still ticking. We received comments from the city in November, before Thanksgiving, and we've been hesitant to reply to the city planning department with regard to our plans that are before them for four months now, because we're waiting on the resolution of this matter in order to move our project forward. So I understand there might be tweaks that people might want to do here and there. You know, there's, there's always a chance to do that later. I think the planning department is going to bring further changes to reflect some of the statewide regulations that have been passed for other areas of single-family development in Burbank. And so I just ask the council to act with urgency here. There's a lot of us waiting on the pipeline, waiting for the resolution of this issue so that we can move on with our construction projects and have a home for our families that we can live in comfortably. And that's all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Our next caller is Justin Warsham.
Welcome.
Thank you, City Council. I called in the first time that you guys were talking about this on the agenda before you went and did all the reviews. I'm just calling because I'm a Burbank resident for over a decade who is in favor of removing the single-family development permit. I'm going to give you some bullet points just to remind you of my family's story. We waited 22 months to get permit approval to add 500 square feet to our small home, which included a second bathroom. During that process, I had two architects say that they would not work with the planning department in Burbank, not because they don't like them personally, but just because it took too much time, like they would be stuck with me for this year-long plus process. And at the time I bought my home, all I could afford in 2013 was a three-bedroom, one-bath, 1,105-square-foot home. And now I want to make it into a 1,600-square-foot home that is a three-bedroom, two-bath. To buy what I want to turn my home into is going to cost me about $1.5 to $1.6 million. So I just want to keep this brief. That's the bullet point of my story. When I started this, it was going to cost $180,000 to do the renovation. That was the bid we got when we started the process. The latest bid I got was just under $300,000, so it's almost doubled in the time that it's taken me to wait for the permit. And I, I've heard on the, in the forums and callers call in, they're in opposition. And the one thing that I don't hear from the people that are in opposition of this is that they have any experience in the permit process. It just sounds like they're worried that everything in their neighborhoods are going to change, and I just can't help but feel like if they had gone through what I had gone through, that maybe they would feel differently. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Our next caller is Wayne Klein.
Welcome.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, Ms., thank you, and Vice Mayor and City Council. My wife and I have been proud residents of Burbank for over 20 years. We worked here, I worked at Disney and NBC. My wife is a schoolteacher. She teaches blind children. And we love Burbank, and we love particularly the beautiful view up in the hills. It's very peaceful. That's one of the great things about it. It gives a great sense of peace after all the commotion of living in the city, you know? And I think we're opposed to the Zone Text Amendment, the changes that would either remove the cap on the height, and particularly the ones on removing any right of notice or appeal. I think those are very important to keep. And I'll tell you a quick success story. The neighbor below, there was a new construction, and they were going to put the electrical lines right in front of our bedroom window. And we objected to that, and they said, well, that's the way the city's going to do it. So because we knew that we have a right of appeal and we have a right to call for a forum, we wrote a letter to the city and said, we, before you do anything, we want a public hearing on this. And then this started the compromise gears in going. And finally, what happened is the city paid a little to put the wire underneath the street. Now, then we had to absorb, the owner would have to absorb the cost to take it back to his property. But I helped chipped in, and so did the neighbor below. So two neighbors chipped in, along with the city, doing their part, and as a result, the city of Burbank is a lot more beautiful, and it's all because of the right of appeal and public hearings, which we just wrote a letter saying that we were going to use, and that starts compromise going, and compromise is what living peacefully is all about. And also, the view, don't take, to take away the view from your neighbor just for yourself is not in the friendly Burbank spirit. So I want you to please remember that, and please keep the public's right to appeal, and also to talk in meetings like this. This is also very good. Thank you. Thank you for such a beautiful city.
Thank you very much. Next speaker?
Our next caller is Sue Clerman.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. You have a monumental task before you with the sheer number of code changes in the Zone Text Amendment, which is unprecedented. 60 pages of redlined code changes is overwhelming. Any single one of these code changes will have a ripple effect in and of itself. But altogether, the Zone Text Amendment changes will be having a significant impact on our single-family neighborhoods in Burbank. Look at the redlined report, Attachment 2, which was included in the original February 8 staff report. Look at the amount of red and what is being changed. Zero public outreach. This issue cannot be ignored, rushed through. With the volume of changes and revisions, there have been no study sessions for council, no community meetings, no public comment, back-and-forth discussions on the scope and impact of the changes. As many of you know, the IDCO took effect in 2015, and it took almost two years, 40-plus meetings, workshops, study sessions, community input from all the stakeholders before the changes were made, and the single-family special development permit was implemented. From the results, the finished homes and projects are currently under construction. The current code is working. Do not eliminate the single-family special development permit. This will be devastating, especially for the total house teardowns and projects pushing the maximum FAR and lot coverage. If eliminated, many of these large projects will fly under the radar with no noticing of the neighbors, no compatibility review, no noticing of when the mega projects are approved or timeline for appeal. Staff says that by eliminating the single-family design guidelines and single-family development, special development permit, things will be better. That remains to be seen, but the reality is you cannot codify compatibility. If you could, other cities would be doing this already. According to staff, there are only a handful, 10 to 12 large projects per year, which involve total house teardowns, maxing out the FAR, and triggering the single-family special development permit. If this is the case, why would you change the code and eliminate protections for only a handful of projects? The current code is not the problem. I urge council, keep the current protections for the single-family special development permit for noticing, project appeals, and compatibility review. The single-family special development permit must be required for total house teardowns and projects maximizing the FAR lot coverage and height. Do not increase the top plate height. Keep the top plate height at a maximum of 20 feet. Looking at the list of active projects, there are several very, very large projects in queue. It appears they are just waiting for the single-family special development protections to be removed. This will open the floodgates for developers and slippers rushing their projects and failing to provide protections for adjacent properties. A word of warning and wake-up call for all Burbank residents and homeowners. If the Zone Text Amendment is approved as written and the single-family special development permit is eliminated for all projects, including total house teardowns, get ready, Burbank. Get ready if the house next door to yours goes up for sale.
Thank you, Ms. Clerman. Your time is up. Next speaker?
Our next caller is Kate Mulligan.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you so much. Hello, City Council, Mayor, Vice Mayor. My name is Kate Mulligan. I live up on the hillside of Burbank. My husband and I, every day, wonder how we got to be so lucky to live in this unbelievable city. And I'm calling in response to the Zone Text Amendment. I think part of what makes Burbank so great is the nuanced zoning. I think it's why I am so lucky to live on this hillside and look on a beautiful roof of my backdoor neighbor, and I still can see Burbank Airport in the distance. I think, while I have empathy for everybody who has been in a waiting process with permits, I sort of feel like the solution is not to just get rid of the rulebook, and it seems like that is what council has come up with. I think also just hearing how many differing views there are on this should sort of solidify that I think this needs to, I don't think there should be a vote. I do hope, if there is, that people are voting no on it. But I think it should be postponed. I think there needs to be more public forum. I think this maybe needs to be something that the voters actually... I didn't even know about this until a friend pointed it out. And I think a lot more people, if they understood that this was happening, you would be hearing a lot more. So sort of an analogy I would make is the other day, I took my son to a children's concert, and it took a long time to get in because we had to show... So I would ask that city consider that this, this rule, this, to change all of these zoning rules, and then, you know, and then to naively think that if people can have an extra two feet, they won't take it, they will. Everybody will take it. It, I know it's in, in, in favor of a certain type of house, but it, once you get rid of that rule, everybody takes that rule. As soon as you take away signs on the front of these houses saying, this is what's, this is what's happening, you say, no, you still have the right to appeal, but how can I appeal something that nobody's informed me of? I do feel like this is something, it should be postponed. I think there should be more consideration from the public on this. Um, I thank you for your time in hearing me. I do think that solution here has not been reached. I think there is a better solution. And honestly, my husband just came in and said, tell them to raise my taxes. I will pay more in taxes. And you can, you can, we'll sign that somewhere. We will pay more in taxes to get more people in that permitting office, because there's no reason why the same person has to look at both big projects and small projects. Um, thank you for your time. I appreciate your consideration. Take care.
Okay. Thank you for volunteering for more taxes as well. Uh, thank you. Next speaker.
Our next caller is Natalie Worsham.
Welcome.
Hello, thank you. Good evening. I wanted to, um, you guys have heard from me before. I've also sent an email to City Council that I wanted to kind of piggyback on a few items some callers had said earlier, and share a few additional points with you. Number one, as far as the permit issues happening, they happened before COVID. This is not something that happened after COVID. It definitely started before COVID, and I can first-handedly say that I, that, that, that I experienced that myself trying to submit plans May of 2019. Um, number two, an opportunity to speak for the community. What about the homeowners? We need to listen to the homeowners, the homeowners that are pulling the permits and experiencing this. Those are the people that you should actually be talking to and listening to. Um, I respect the fact that we don't want mansions, right? I don't want to live next to that house either. But adding less than five hundred square feet, which is a modest addition to my single-story home, should not take the two and a half years that it took. Uh, in the meantime, I was actually told to literally bulldoze my house. That would have cost me over eight hundred thousand dollars easily, and that would not be a financial smart move. And let me mention to you that there is no design review for that. So you could bulldoze your house, and there's no design review. But if I'm trying to add less than five hundred square feet, I'm waiting over two years. Originally quoted in 2019, a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty thousand, that quote is now three hundred thousand dollars. We're not changing the roof line. We're not changing the front structure. We want to keep that charm of that Burbank, and we're preserving our backyard. I just want some elbow room and an extra bathroom, and it shouldn't be that much to ask. Right now, you can add two ADUs onto one lot and get your permit in less than sixty days. So if you're concerned about the prev- preservation of Burbank, or how that's going to affect our community and our local services, I'm surprised that nobody has thrown their hands up in the air for that. The homeowners that have spent time and money that has now been over double the cost, that has now been over three years, they need a voice in this. And they, something needs to change, and it needs to change now. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hey, thank you.
Our next caller is Roy Weigand.
Welcome.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Um, I am calling, uh, regarding the ZTA tonight, um, that would, if it passes, uh, would eliminate the current protections established just a few years back under the IDCO. The single-family special development permit will be eliminated, along with protections of public noticing, the compatibility review, and noticing to public projects. Um, the ZTA proposes to increase the building top plate and will open the floodgates for total house tear downs with no boundaries. Um, I find it interesting that a couple of the callers, at least one has mentioned that this would not affect, uh, you know, laws against mansions. Um, that is not, from what myself and a number of people can read into the sixty pages, I'm, I'm curious how many people have actually read it, but, uh, the devil's in the details. Um, if it absolutely would, when you change the top plate height, uh, it would absolutely, uh, change things as far as what we have now to protect against mega mansions. If approved, we are going back, backwards to the pre-IDCO days of residents awakening, to the sound of bulldozers as first notice of the mega mansion landing next door. Um, so this is a very real, uh, thing that could happen here in the city. Uh, and I, I know it's very dense, the sixty pages. I'm curious if, how many people in the council have really, really taken this bite by bite and really looked at what's in there? Because, um, it's, there, there's a lot, a lot of things hiding in the weeds. I, maybe that's the long term, but in the weeds is where all the details are. Uh, and I, I think it was Jim Casey earlier that alluded very eloquently to how few projects, um, how could ten projects a year be so overwhelming that it's holding up over six hundred smaller permit requests? There must be something to learn from Glendale, uh, like he alluded to, that they, uh, have hired more staff to clear this backlog. COVID has not helped, uh, you know, we understand that staff is struggling here in Burbank with all the impacts of, of the pandemic and everything. But throwing out something that was crafted with so many hours, uh, put into it by citizen staff and approved by the council, uh, just does not make any sense at all. Um, I know we approved here in Burbank, uh, higher sales tax. We kind of tied for the highest in the U.S. I thought all that money, a, a chunk of it, would be used at City Hall for things like this, hiring more staff to help with this backlog. What happened to that money? Why, why do we never hear about where that's gone? Um, we, we know that's got to add up to at least a, a nice, uh, nice amount that could be used for, I would hope, for something like this issue without, uh, making such draconian changes. Uh, and I think somebody also had mentioned that, that, uh, people that don't want this to pass are planning on building, uh, you know, some mega thing. We have no, we're not in any process personally, not in any process building or any time stamp. So it's not about that for us.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next speaker.
Our next caller is Debra Bindy.
Welcome.
Um, good evening, City Council members. Um, I'm calling regarding the changes, um, that everyone else is calling about tonight. Um, I, uh, looked at the planning meetings and I watched them. When the planning, uh, department suggested this, they didn't have any input to the following meeting. They had one person input. Then it went to another meeting. They had three people input. Of those three, they were all doing construction. Uh, that, and they come up with this idea and they pass it on to the City Council to approve it, while most of the people in Burbank have no idea of what's going on. I finally got answers today, only today, from the callback this year, and we requested someone call me back. I had to email and say, haven't heard from anybody. So we have twelve planners. That's not many. And we have five, they're in the building, our ADUs are outsourced. I inquired if we've done any kind of internal streamlining, dedicating, you know, these people to doing additions on homes, these people dedicated to doing this type, so that somebody is an expert in each area. When people have questions, they can go to whoever's been digs and needed for that. And that they can come up with streamlined processes instead of just trashing the whole system that we currently have. I understand, um, people being very frustrated that they can't get stuff done on their homes. They bought their home, they want to enjoy their home, and they deserve to be able to add a couple rooms on. It shouldn't be this difficult. But I am concerned that you're just going to throw away the rulebook, basically, and I won't be notified about what's going on. And that's one of the things, you know, our little community, the reason the resale in this area is so good, is because it is a great little community. And I just, I don't know what to say. It's like we keep on saying stuff and no one responds to us. You kind of listen, but then still do whatever. Um, we do have a water shortage, the planning meeting yesterday, you know, the environment impact stuff, they finally admitted, yeah, we're going to have problems with sewer and problems with water and other things. So like, really? Is everybody like on the same team and working together to solve these issues? It doesn't feel like it. Anyway, thank you for the, the input, and I really hope that you allow more people to actually input, maybe, you know, come with, with ideas that it can be in stream, streamlined internally, or a certain section needs to be revised, but not the whole thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Our next caller is Kevin Muldoon.
Welcome.
Hello, Mayor, how are you tonight? I'm calling about the zone text amendment. I don't think I could say it any better than the previous callers or the information you've received from Protect Burbank Neighborhoods. Uh, I was adversely affected prior to the IDCO. My neighborhood was subject to the McMansion phenomenon going in, and we are still suffering the consequences because a lot of them were built on spec and have become Airbnb's in my neighborhood. So I hope you take time to slow down and, uh, take a second look at the revisions that have been put before you, before staff. Uh, sixty pages is a lot of changes to take in. And last but not least, I would like to thank you, any of you that would give me support for being, uh, selected to be on the Charter Review Committee. I'd be proud to serve my city in this position, and I, uh, look forward to the voting tonight. Uh, have a good evening.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Our next caller is Anita Maradian.
Welcome.
Uh, thank you. Uh, good evening to the Burbank City Council. I'm calling today to express my support of the zone text amendment that's up for a vote tonight. Um, I've been hearing some of the comments, um, as I've been listening, and I know that, uh, I've been following this since November in hopes that it will get passed, as there are, um, critical areas of the code that do need some amending. The object, the objectivity that's being introduced, um, will help to speed things up, and I think that's really needed. A lot of, uh, residents are suffering, um, waiting for their plans to get improved, in particular the plate height restriction, which is really harsh on hillside residents, as some of them are precluded from building two-story homes, um, simply because of the location of their home. So I'm really hopeful that this will get passed. I know that some of the residents are complaining that they haven't had enough notice, but I think they're, I'm, I'm sure the city has fol- followed the guidelines for notice. And as I've been following this for several months now, I'm really hoping that, um, we don't have any roadblocks and that it will go forward tonight. Uh, just wanted to thank you all for the time you've put in, and looking forward to hearing about the results.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Our next caller is Simon Hamel.
Welcome.
Good evening, Council. I'm calling to ask, you formally acknowledged staff's written answer to the public ZTA meeting, where they stated they didn't have enough time since October to provide documents about even one real home project to prove all of their claims that the code is causing a two-year delay. So far, the only plan set in application that I'm aware, uh, from a real construction project that any council person has viewed about the current building codes was shown to them by me. Example should be on the record, not in private, but the record is now closed. I asked for project numbers over a month ago so we could pull records and figure out if other projects were as lacking as the one I can show. With basic entry-level omissions that ate up our staff's time requiring four plan returns before the appeal, and again, four after the appeal, if that happens enough with only six total planners to cover hundreds of backed-up plans, it's easy to see how the misorganization of lumping every project in the same pile is the primary driver of slow turnover and causing all of the projects to wait in line. In that case, uh, the corrections needed were basic, like square footage and height. Stripping protections and access to legal remedies is not the answer. One-way audio only zooming at staff without dialogue is not the same as having the input of the special select group of citizens the government has decided should be privately invited to have special input in changing the code. I also showed some of you how the staff's answer regarding grading permits is missing a basic explanation from Burbank Code 101603G6 that demonstrates that there is already an objective option to build any size second story available to every single resident of Burbank, no matter where they live. We don't do that, we don't have that for any other zone, zoning concerns. Only one part of town where you can build a stable. Is that fair? Who subjectively decided that? There is a solution to the height that might be objective. Instead of top of plate, add the exact same two feet as support below, put it under the house. And it's only used when needed, instead of stealing two feet of privacy from every single non-resident, uh, non-building resident in the entire city, if this is really about slopes. Uh, th- this is a more objective, uh, solution than the proposed change. Two council members, uh, have new code language, hand-delivered by me. You can introduce it, let's do a study session. You could tie increases in height to increase distance from the neighbor beyond twenty feet. That's another objective option. Twenty-two feet in the flatlands, and now, uh, twenty in the slopes, that's still objective, like before. Give a universal six inches of foundation leeway for any property, also objective. These are the kinds of discussions we should be having as a full community. Even though I'm no longer building this year, it is a valid concern to not want people watching my young children in the swimming pool from higher up in the air. There's a ton of concerns, let's go over it line by line. I could say this is going to be an election issue. If anyone thinks anything we're saying is not correct, I urge you to come spend a few minutes with us, let me show you some public records that tell a different story than what you might be understanding from our staff's presentation. Please amend the ZTA and do not pass it without a more democratic process. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Our next caller is Juan Guillen.
Welcome.
Good evening. So I've given up on, uh, trying to get this phone system fixed so we can hear, uh, the speakers prior to us. It's only been over two years. And, uh, we're still not meeting in public, which is kind of amusing because what's brewing in Burbank, we can do that, we can do that face-to-face with the members of the public. And we can even show up to dog and ponies and charity events, and be massless, and take pictures with celebrities. But we can't view and sit with residents to discuss the zone text amendments, so we can have some discussion and open communication? We still can't go to council chambers? When is this going to change? Seems like this is the new normal. We just don't want to see the residents. It's easier not to see their faces and make decisions and do whatever you want to do anyways.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Our next caller is Tamala Takahashi.
Welcome.
Great. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council members. My name is Tamala Takahashi. I'm a twenty-three-year resident of Burbank, and I'm calling tonight regarding the topic of the Charter Review Committee. The city charter is the basic document that defines the organization, powers, functions, and essential procedures of our city government. Our charter is, therefore, the most important legal document of our city. This review is a crucial function to prepare us for years to come. The charter is a relatively brief document, but it is the core document that provides a scaffolding for the entire running of the city. I have applied to the review committee as a longtime resident of Burbank and as an experienced nonprofit board member and trainer. I have been a member of many bylaw update committees, as well as having drafted new bylaws from scratch. I understand the legal, practical, and projective aspects of drafting and updating bylaws that I can bring to the process of considering updating the charter. I also understand the scope of this committee is not to update the charter, but to determine whether a full charter review is necessary. I have taken preliminary look at the charter, and I have prepared a number of considerations ready to present for the committee if and when it begins to meet. If I am chosen for this committee, I will enjoy looking closely at the current wording and be a part of the team to determine if the charter is ready for a few, full review and update, in order to be the guiding document for our city for the next decade. Before I wrap up, I want to also thank the Met Team tonight for the announcement earlier regarding the MAP program. Innovative programs like these are indications of a high qual- the high quality of our Met Team and the leadership of our chief Albanese. I also want to thank the council and staff for updating to gender-neutral language for the city municipal code. This is an excellent step towards a more inclusive city for all. Thank you for your consideration for the Charter Review Board, and have a great rest of your meeting.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Our next caller is Thomas.
Welcome.
As one of the six bills that was appealed in the past five years, I have a lot of experience in, um, this current discussion. I'm calling to voice my support to update the standards and definitions of single-family homes. It's already hard enough nowadays, especially when it comes to homes, and housing in Burbank is taking the right steps by adopting this change. Shortening the review time is very important. Currently, it takes upwards of two years to get a plan approved. And considering- I have a lot of experience in this current discussion. I'm calling to voice my support to update the standards and definitions of single-family homes. It's already hard enough nowadays, especially when it comes to homes, and housing in Burbank is taking the right steps by adopting this change. Shortening the review time is very important. Currently, it takes upwards of two years to get a plan approved. And considering how inflation costs are lowering the worth of your dollar nowadays, it is very crucial we pass this change. Now, a few comments regarding previous callers. And unless you live in the hillside, I want to state that your view is not protected. Groups that oppose this change constantly complain about the cost when in fact it is their constant appeals which is driving the cost up, especially when they make up false theories about why a plan should not be approved. In my experience, these nosy neighbors are settings are getting involved in a process that does not involve them. The experts are the city planners and the architects. The decision to build and have a plan should only be between these two parties. No outside parties should be involved. They should not propose that people go and build under the ground instead of building to the maximum height that is allowed in the code. The code is proposing a two-foot allowance for the inside of your home that will help a lot of people who are building avoid a step down on their first floor. My answer is yes. Pass this change.
Thank you very much. Your time is up. Next speaker?
Mr. Mayor, I do not have any more callers, so it's go ahead. We can go ahead and close the public comment period.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. So there being no further public comment, I now declare the public comment period closed. Now is the time for brief response from City Council, City Manager, and/or the City Attorney. Colleagues? Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to everybody who called in tonight. To those of you who called about a specific agenda item, I'll address your comments when we get there. Just a couple notes. For Mr. Donahue, just wanted to confirm, sir, that Agenda Item 7 you called about is not on the consent calendar. That'll be a report to council, so please do be sure to watch that until we get to that point. Mr. Guillen, if you're still watching, I would encourage you to pay attention to Agenda Item 10, where we will be talking about a return-to-in-person-meeting plan. And lastly, Ms. Solis, first of all, congratulations on your recognition as Woman of the Year for the 403 AD. Looking forward to celebrating with you on Friday. But I just wanted to say I thank you for your comment tonight. I agree with every word that you said, and I think that if we can light City Hall to recognize a football win by the Rams, we can certainly take a similar action to stand in solidarity with the people of Ukraine as all of our neighbors had. So I join you in reiterating that request to the City Manager's office. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else? Councilmember Springer? There was a tag.
I'd like to thank all the callers, and much will be addressed in the agenda items. But I would like to address the comment about Measure P. When we put that on the ballot, we committed to our residents that we would dedicate that money to capital improvements, to infrastructure, half of it, and then the other half, or about half, to unfunded pension liabilities. And so that money is dedicated for two purposes. And as far as ADUs go, we had an ADU ordinance in place, and the state came and overrode it. So states, ADUs are largely out of Burbank control. They're governed by the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Colleagues? Okay. I just want to thank everybody, all the speakers that came on and shared their concerns with us. Now is, the consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. Madam City Clerk, please read the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Consent calendar, item number one, adoption of an ordinance amending Title IV, Chapter II, Article I of the Burbank Municipal Code relating to solid waste and organics recycling. Item number two, City Council minutes for March 1, 2022, dark meeting of March 8, 2022. And item three, approval of downtown Burbank Property-Based Business Improvement District Fiscal Year 2022 Annual Report. And that concludes the items.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? Vice Mayor Anthony?
So moved.
Motion and Councilmember Springer seconds? Okay. We have motion by Vice Mayor Anthony and seconded by Councilmember Springer. Will Madam City Clerk please call the vote?
Vice Mayor Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Springer?
Yes.
Councilmember Frutos?
Madam City Clerk, yes on all with the exception of number two. I was in Washington, DC on city business, so I abstain on number two for not being at the council meeting. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. And that will be just for the March 1 meeting, just to clarify, because we were dark on the 8th, so that's good. Thank you.
Oh, right. So I was trying to get double credit. No, just kidding. Yes, ma'am.
Only one, only one. And Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Mayor Talamontes?
Yes.
Thank you.
There are seven reports to counsel this evening. The first report is the consideration of an introduction of an ordinance amending the Burbank Municipal Code in its entirety to replace gender-specific language with gender-neutral language. Madam City Clerk, please present this report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This report was on November 16. Councilmember Schultz requested to bring your report back as a first step to consider updating the City of Burbank code, the municipal code, to reflect the gender-neutral language. This request is consistent with updating the BMC and the recent updates that we just had to the BMC. This provision consists of federal and state laws ensuring equal protection under the law. So the Fourteenth Amendment of U.S. Constitution provides that all persons are afforded equal protection under the law. This protection extends to the freedoms of speech and expression of First Amendment. Subsequently passed legislation, specifically the Federal Civil Rights Act of 1964 and the California Fair Employment Housing prohibit discrimination based on protected classification, including a person's gender identity and gender expression. The City Clerk's Office has evaluated options to update the BMC to replace all gender-specific reference with gender-neutral pronouns and is hereby presented as the following options for City Council to consider. One is to leave the BMC as it is, utilizing, leave it as it is with utilization of gender-specific pronouns. Or two, we amend the entire BMC to remove all references to gender-specific language and any other gender pronouns or nouns. So the options that we're presenting in the report tonight, so the gender language will be preserved is legally required due to specific gender intent of the provision. So the gender-neutral pronouns will include the feminine and masculine genders. It would be changed to they, them, their shall indicate a singular individual unless context indicates on the contrary. With this information provided to City Council, there is a cost that will be tied to this specific change if council decide to move forward and act on this item tonight as the first step, and the cost is minimal, is $1,000, and it's being conducted by our code publishing company, which we currently, they are our contractor for publishing our code and making sure all the language is accurate and correct in the code. So I'm here just asking council to provide directions. I understand this is the first step, so we can, council may choose to introduce an ordinance tonight, or they may introduce, they may choose to note and file. So I'm here to get some notes and see what directions council want to move with. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Councilmember Schultz, this is your, you asked for this item. You want to start the discussion?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief. First, I just wanted to thank all of the community members who brought this to my attention and have been advocating for this really crucial change. And of course, thank you to our city clerk and her team for working diligently to bring this back. I think this is a critical step, and the only thing I want to add is I think that it's important that we do it, not just because it's legally required, but because it really is the right thing to do. It's important that when people see City Hall, they don't just see their values and the diversity of our community reflected on the dais, but they also see it in the words that we choose to use. So I would just ask that we unanimously introduce the ordinance tonight. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, unless there's further discussion.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Frutos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will also be joining Councilmember Schultz. I definitely support the staff report that recommends the introduction of the proposed ordinance to begin the process to implement gender-neutral pronouns. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Anthony?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, we, as a country, we are a constitutional republic, and the republic is who represents the people. But the Constitution comes first, and the laws and the ordinances on paper are primary in this country. And our words on page are our values. And so this is a great step forward and a steal for only $1,000 to get it done all in one fell swoop. I'm very supportive of this.
Thank you. Councilmember Springer?
I support this. Thank you.
Yes, I too will be supporting this. This is a no-brainer, I mean, moving forward. Thank you for bringing it up. Councilmember Schultz? So we'll go ahead and take a roll?
Thank you. Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Councilmember Springer?
Yes.
Councilmember Frutos?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anthony?
Yes.
Mayor Talamontes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Madam City Clerk, we didn't actually have a motion in a second.
I will move to introduce the ordinance, Mr. Mayor.
Well, Councilmember Schultz did.
He kinda did it, but, okay. And Councilmember Frutos is the second?
Actually, it was Councilmember Springer.
Springer was second. So we did have a first and a second.
Man, our top lawyer gave me bad advice. That's going to cost you a soda pop, sir.
Well, I saw Councilmember Frutos be the second speaker without a second.
Yes. So I do have Councilmember Schultz, I have Councilmember Frutos, and I have 5-0 vote to introduce the motion, to introduce the ordinance for this agenda item.
So I can't disagree with that.
Thank you.
Thank you for the correction.
Excellent. We're all in agreement. That's awesome.
Okay, so then the city clerk owes me a soda pop.
It was, it was a happy moment where everybody agreed on it. Thank you.
Excellent. Moving on. Thank you for that, colleagues. That is awesome. The next report is the appointment to fill one vacancy on the Burbank-Glendale-Pacadena Airport Authority for an unexpired term. Madam City Clerk, please present this report.
Thank you. I have three reports in a row, so you get me here for a little while. So our second report is, of course, to appoint the vacancy on the Burbank-Glendale-Pacadena Airport Authority. And on January 28, we began advertising and accepting applications. And the term is ending on May 31, 2023, and this was created by the resignation of Don Brown as he's no longer able to serve. The advertisement went in the city website, the city council announcements, the social media, and also press releases, The LA Times, Burbank Leader, and MyBurbank.com. Notices were posted at City Hall and the community groups and organizations. The deadline to submit the application to the city clerk was Monday, February 28, 5:00 p.m. And we received five applications, and I'm going to read the names as they received an order as I'm going to read them. Feal Dojic, Paul Dyson, Bill Wiggins, Charles Corday, and Muskin Lalani. The applications were included in a packet, and if council don't have any questions for me, I can move forward and start taking the vote.
Colleagues, any questions? Okay. Madam City Clerk?
Okay. So again, I'm going to read the names, and then we'll start one at a time for the vote. Feal Dojic, Paul Dyson, Bill Wiggins, Charles Corday, and Muskin Lalani. Right now, I'm taking the vote for Feal Dojic. Paul Dyson. I have one, two, three, four. Four. Bill Wiggins, one. Congratulations to Mr. Dyson, who's been appointed to serve on the airport commission. Thank you.
Like we've done in the past, let's go ahead and make it a unanimous appointment. I vote for Mr. Dyson. Welcome, Mr. Dyson. Okay, let's see the next item.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I have your permission to make a comment on this appointment?
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to point out that Mr. Dyson has applied a couple times to the airport commission, and he finally got voted in. So thank you for your perseverance, Mr. Dyson. And to all the applicants, please continue. Again, Mr. Dyson, he's applied several times, and he finally got in this time. But it's great to have him on board and just took some time. Thank you, Mr. Dyson. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anytime, Mrs. Councilmember Frutos. And I too want to mention to the people that did not get appointed but took the time to apply, don't give up. There will be other, I'm sure there'll be other vacancies down the road. In various boards and commissions, you can get interested, you can get involved in the community and the City of Burbank as well. So I encourage you to hang in there. Thank you. Moving on to the next item. The third report is the appointment of members to the Charter Review Committee. Madam City Clerk, you're up again.
All right, here we go. So as you're aware, this is the appointment for the Charter Review Committee, and the Charter Review Committee is appointed every five years. The last time the Review Committee was appointed by council was in 2016. And the committee presented a report to the City Council for the recommendation in June of 2017. On December 20, on December 14, 2021, the City Council directed the city clerk to advertise for five positions on the Charter Review Committee based on Section 1400. In the city clerk, in 1400, the City Council required to appoint new Charter Review Committee no later than May 8 of 2022. And those are five committee members that will be appointed by each of the council. On January 3, 2022, the City Clerk's Office began advertising, accepting applications for the five positions. And again, we advertised on the city website, on the announcements of the city council meeting, LA Times, MyBurbank.com, and the social media. Notices to our community groups and organizations. The deadline to submit for the Charter Review was February 2, 2022, at 5:00 p.m. Please note that the City Council may elect to make the appointment of an applicant who's currently serving on another board commission or committee. It's this one-time temporary appointment until the review is complete. So therefore, we make an exception if the members are serving on another boards or commission. They're allowed to serve on the Charter Review because this is a temporary position, a temporary appointment. The applications are listed in the order received in the city clerk, as we received them in the city clerk's office. We received nine applications, and I'm going to read all the names. And they also went and indicate they did meet the vaccination requirement, and so did also the commissions, the airport commission that we just took the vote on. So right now, I'm going to read all the names in record. Jason Bennett, Christopher Rizotti, Gavin Chow, Kevin Muldoon, Tamela Takahashi, Andrea Dinasian, Alejandro Escobar, Alice Howell, and Gloria Solis. I want to bring to the City Council's attention, since this is a five-member committee and each council member will be able to choose the person that they would like to appoint, and we have nine members, that nine applicants that applied, I would like to ask if council would prefer, and maybe you want to have a discussion or you're agreeing with this, the appointment process, is we call in on each one of the council members, starting with the mayor, vice mayor, and going down by seniority and asking if each council member would like to give me a name of the person they would appoint, unless somebody picks that name prior to... Unless somebody picks that name prior to me getting to your turn, you have an option to pick somebody else from the nine applicants. This is just one way of doing it to make sure that we get five members appointed. So with this, if council has any questions, or the mayor would like to direct to how we should take the vote.
Colleagues, if you were all in agreement, consensus in regards to her advice, how to proceed, mayor, vice mayor, and then most senior council member down the line, is that okay? Okay?
Mr. Mayor, if it's all right, I'd prefer the more senior council members to myself get their choice first. I don't wanna step on anyone's toes, if that's all right. So I'll go after.
So if I'm hearing this correctly, do we wanna start with the mayor, Mayor Talamontis, and then move on to Councilmember Frudos, Councilmember Springer, and then move on to both Council, Vice Mayor Anthony and Councilmember Schultz?
I would prefer that, if that's all right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, move forward? Okay. So right now, I'm gonna call on Mayor Talamontis if you can give me the person you're appointing.
There are a lot of obviously qualified people on this list, but my appointment will be Alejandro Escobar.
Okay, thank you. And now I'm moving on to Councilmember Frudos.
I wanna thank everybody that applied. Definitely a very diverse group of backgrounds applying. My choice will be Mr. Chris Rizotti.
Thank you. And now, Councilmember Springer?
Yes, thank you to all the applicants. I choose Gloria Salas.
And now I'm gonna move to Vice Mayor Anthony?
Yeah, thank you to everyone who applied. This is a great group of folks, great resumes. I will choose Kevin Maldune.
Thank you. And now, Councilmember Schultz?
Well, first of all, thank you to everyone who applied. The person I was gonna pick has been selected, so I guess I get a second choice here. I will select Gavin Chow.
Thank you. So we will be contacting all five members. Thank you, and congratulations to all of them.
Great, and once again, same comments that we made with the prior appointment. You might not have gotten selected tonight, but there's openings, you know, along the way, so keep looking at, see if that's something that you're interested in, and apply again. Thank you very much. Okay, the next report is the adoption of an ordinance amending sections of Title 10 of Burbank Municipal Code pertaining to definitions, standards for single-family residential zones and non-conforming structures, and adoption of a resolution amending fiscal year 2021-22 citywide fee schedule, project number 21-4984. Presented this report is Shipra Rajesh. Thank you very much, Associate Planner in the Community Development Department, and welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Talamontis. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor Anthony, and members of the council. Tonight, for your consideration, is the second reading of the Zone Text Amendment proposing updates to the single-family regulations, including regulations on definition, standards, elimination of inconsistent language, and implementation of a streamlined planning review process to shorten the planning review time. The city staff presented this Zone Text Amendment for the first time to the council on February 8th, and for the second time on February 15th. During the meeting, after listening to concerns from the members of the public, the council made a motion to introduce the ordinance and directed the staff to conduct an informational community meeting and report back to the council during tonight's meeting. The community meeting on the project was held on February 28th. The staff provided a presentation on all the changes that are being proposed as a part of the Zone Text Amendment. Details regarding every change being proposed was presented, and it was opened up to get comments and feedback from members of the public. Members of the public had an opportunity to ask questions and provide feedback, both verbally and in written, using the Q&amp;A feature of the Zoom app. Staff was able to respond to all the verbal questions that were raised during the community meeting. And staff prepared an FAQ document responding to all the written questions that were asked during the community meeting and made it available on our city's website. Additionally, comments were also welcomed after the meeting via email and phone call. Staff also responded to additional questions on the proposed Zone Text Amendment that was sent after the community meeting. And we reached out to some members of the public who seeked further clarification on the proposed updates. Based on the feedback from the community meeting and the responses to the members of the public, staff is continuing to recommend to the city council to adopt the ordinance as proposed. The intention of the proposed Zone Text Amendment, or, you know, the proposed Zone Text Amendment, would continue to preserve the existing character of single-family neighborhoods by continuing to regulate mass and bulk, by expanding the scope of existing objective standards, and implementing new objective standards derived from the design guidelines, making sure that the mass and bulk of single-family residential development is being controlled or regulated. It will also remove inconsistent language from the existing code, bringing in more clarity. And it would allow for a streamlined planning review process by essentially allowing a one-step planning review process where all single-family development projects are reviewed during the plan check process. This concludes my presentation. However, I do want to respond to some of the questions that were raised during the general public comment period. The first one was regarding elimination of design guidelines and the resulting mansionization. It was discussed during the community meeting, and I just want to reiterate that we are not eliminating any of the design guidelines. In fact, we are bringing that in within our existing code as objective development standards that are measurable and uniformly applicable to all single-family development projects. This is not going to create buildings that will be out of scale, because these are the same standards that we are applying today as a part of design guidelines. In fact, it is going to make it more strict for us during the plan check process to ensure that all single-family residential development projects comply with these objective standards. The next was regarding the views. Well, the hillside views, views are important within the hillside area because we have regulations on hillside, within the hillside area of the city, and we are maintaining that. This update is not going to disrupt any of the views of the neighbors within the hillside region of the city. Currently, the code does not have view regulations on non-hillside lots. We do not regulate that for non-hillside lots currently, and the proposed update is maintaining the stance. Next, the top of the plate height increase. The top of the plate height increase, the intention behind that is to allow homeowners who have buildings on raised foundation or who own lots that have a sloping grade, allow them some flexibility in terms of design to accommodate a ceiling height ranging from eight feet to 10 feet. The code has built-in mechanism in terms of objective standards, including FAR. Any ceiling height about 12 feet would be captured under FAR. It would be calculated twice and will eat up the living space that a homeowner can add. So that is one measure that we have existing, within our existing code, to control the mass and bulk. The second thing is the reference grade. We are not changing the reference grade for measuring height. Height is measured from finished grade or natural grade, whichever is lower. So even if a homeowner was to grade and lower the lot, the height would be measured from the lower end. Or, you know, fill and make the lot higher, it would be measured from the lower end of the two grades. So that built-in mechanism makes sure that a homeowner would not be able to exceed the maximum allowed top of the plate height. The height of the foundation, raised foundation, is included within the top of the height calculation, so it is not going to extend or exceed the 22-feet limit if this gets approved. So any person is going to have to follow the maximum allowed top of the plate and top of the roof height. Additionally, there was something about electrical lines being one of the appeal issues. We do not regulate that, and any appeal to, under the current regulation, any appeal to single-family homes should pertain to the design guidelines. So that was one thing I wanted to clarify. The second thing is the public outreach for this project has been done as per applicable municipal code within Burbank Municipal Code, and we followed all the public noticing requirements for a Zone Text Amendment. The community meeting allowed for back and forth with the members of the community, with some of them being able to ask additional questions two to three times, and we provided responses for each and every question, return or oral question. We made sure that everyone got an opportunity to speak as well. The COVID situation did not delay these projects. The timeline lag that you are seeing has been consistent before COVID, since the adoption of the single, excuse me, single-family guidelines. The timeline for these projects have been anywhere between 12 to 18 months. One thing that was mentioned is currently within a code section 10-1-603H and G that the code allows for exceeding the height limit, that is not accurate. Subsection G of the code talks about yard and landscaping regulations, and subsection H of the code talks about fences. Nowhere in the code does it allow a homeowner to build higher than what is allowed. Privacy. Privacy currently, when a project goes through a single-family residential discretionary review process, we have in design guidelines an option, two to three options that a homeowner can choose from. We have put in language, basically making that an objective development standard, that any homeowner will have to comply with when proposing a second-story addition. So we are cognizant of the fact that people want their privacy, and we have put in place mechanisms to ensure that. Internal streamlining, so the whole update that you're seeing or that's in front of you is for streamlining internally. We are making sure that what we have right now, the two-step prolonged process, we make sure that all the development or design guidelines that we have have been incorporated within the code, and we are proposing implementation of a one-step review process wherein a homeowner is allowed to go through a plan check process to get their permits, which would make it faster, at the same time ensure that they comply with all the design guideline requirement in the form of objective development standards and not exceed the scale or exceed the mass and bulk that is there right now within the single-family neighborhoods in the city. Another thing that was pointed out was there are only 10 projects which are large projects. That information is inaccurate. We surveyed all the single-family projects from past two years. There were total 78 projects that were submitted. Out of the 78 projects, 55 were remodels and additions ranging from 500 to 1,000 square feet, and the rest of it, that is 23 projects, they were for new construction, brand-new homes. All these projects, irrespective of the amount of work they're proposing, were subject to single-family special development permit, and they all had to go through the same process of making sure the design guidelines are being met, and then the back and forth, and the timeline for all of them were around a year. So that information is not true. Again, we are not eliminating the design guidelines, we are just putting in, putting them in the code as objective design standards. And then regarding the process in city of Glendale, staff reached out to city of Glendale Assistant Community Development Director Bradley Calvert, and we got to know that currently their new single-family homes and additions have to go through a design review process, which takes around two years. It takes them two years to process these, and this includes the entitlement plus plan check. They are looking to hire more staff because they have, they are understaffed, and they need more staff members to process these permits, and they expressed an interest in adopting a streamlined review process as well. So we did reach out to them and speak, you know, we gave them an overview of what we did and spoke about their situation. Just to give you information regarding city of Glendale, since it was brought up, I think I covered most of the questions that were raised today. Fred, please chime in if I missed anything.
No, Shipra, I think you answered all the questions. Thank you.
Ms. Rajesh, thank you very much. It was very clear and concise, your responses to each question, their concerns, and there were even some corrections to the comments that were made, which I appreciate. And thank you for reaching out to Glendale and clarifying that perspective. So, you know, people come up here and they can make a comment, whether it's right or wrong or indifferent, they just make the comment and then see what happens. I'm glad that you're here tonight to straighten the record, making sure that the record is proper, and the information that we as council are receiving is the right information. Whether people agree with it or not, it's the right information that we as council members that have to make the decision, the policy decision moving forward, have to listen to, and I appreciate your comments. Thank you. Councilmember, does anybody else want to weigh in? Concerns, comments? Councilmember Springer?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Rajesh, for your report. Can you please tell me where in the report and the ordinance it explains the 22-foot plate height and the crawl space, and that the crawl space is included in the plate height?
Yes, thank you, council member. So the reference grade for measuring height is measured in, is indicated in section 10-1-603C. And I'm going through the code to make sure I'm referring to the right section. So subsection C of section 10-1-603 talks about-
Hey, grab that report, okay? Sorry.
I can share my screen, too.
Okay.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and share it? That way, we can all-
Yeah. I have the code section open on my screens. I'm gonna share that. Okay. I don't know if you're able to see my screen. Is it visible?
Yes, it's small.
Okay.
It's tiny, but we can see it.
Okay. So this is the subsection within the code for which we are not making any changes for the reference grade. As it's mentioned here, the measurement is taken at each point along the face of the structure, no less than one-foot intervals, and the reference grade shall be established as the existing ground surface of the lot prior to any grading, cut, or fill activity, or the finished ground, ground surface of the lot after grading, whichever is lower. What that does is essentially restricts a homeowner or an applicant to measure their height from the lower grade, so they wouldn't be able to, you know, grade, pad up, and then go beyond a certain limit. Secondly, the code also encourages to, for constructions to follow the grade. It doesn't encourage unnecessary grading, and that's what it's shown in the figure here on your screen.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I would just add, for those people with an agenda packet in front of them, it's attachment 1-11 and 1-12 is the printed text of what Ms. Rajesh has up on the screen.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. 1-11 and 1-12.
So like, for example, on this photo or on the illustration, like on the left, the 22 feet would be like on the right side of the front one?
Yes, council member, and I'm going to open up a document which probably might bring in more clarity. Give me a second. So on your- So on your screen is an example, a real world example of a lot which has substantial.
Shipra, still have the code up.
Oh, you cannot see, okay, let me, let me stop sharing and resharing. Is it visible now?
Yes.
Yes, Shipra.
Okay, so where you see my cursor, that is the grade, the natural grade of this lot. And the two yellow lines represent, this first one is the top of the plate height limitation, which is the imaginary twenty-feet line under current code, which is parallel to the natural grade or the finished floor, whichever is lower. And above that is the thirty-feet maximum top of the roof height. The crawl space that you see here, and this is the same house and this is the section view. The previous view was the elevation. The highlighted blue section shows the crawl space. And that gets accounted for within the height, within the height limit. So you see how here this area is the crawl space underneath of the building. I'm going to move up to the elevation view. And the height is measured from here. So it is inclusive of the crawl space, the height.
So the bottom yellow line is the top of the plate?
Correct.
And then the, the second yellow line would be the top of the roof line?
Correct.
To clarify, Shipra, Mayor Fred Ramirez, Assistant Director and Planning, can you clarify, because I think the question is, the dash yellow line is the maximum height that a roof could reach. However, in this section drawing, it's not showing that the roof of this building goes all the way to thirty feet. It's just showing what the maximum height could be to thirty feet. Is that correct, Shipra? Okay.
That is correct.
And did you say that the two feet, if somebody chooses to do the two-feet plate height, it applies towards the FAR? So it's like the volume of that two feet? Well, or no, the two feet times the square footage, right? To explain it, please, thank you.
Sure, council member. So FAR, what happens is if someone exceeds a certain interior height, that is twelve feet, and that twelve feet is measured from whichever grade is lower, the reference grade we currently have. So if someone were to come in and build a high vaulted ceiling, as soon as they hit about twelve feet as measured from the reference grade, the FAR for that area of the house that exceeds twelve feet gets counted twice. So that area of the house essentially will be added two times within the FAR calculation, which is significant because FAR is limited at forty percent. A homeowner cannot exceed that forty percent FAR. So if someone were to put in high ceilings and raised foundation and all that and exceed the twelve-feet height for the FAR calculation, they will basically, they will lose out on building additional living space that they could do on their lot.
Because they chose to do a twenty-two-foot plate height. Can you use an example of, say, a ten thousand, some even numbers like a ten thousand square foot lot, forty percent coverage? And if they wanted to do, they could build four thousand square feet, right? And so if they did twenty-two plate height, what would that reduce it to?
So, for example, I would just like to make a note here that it's not the twenty-two feet plate height, it's the twelve-feet interior ceiling height as measured from the reference grade. That is captured within the overall plate height. So if someone were to come in and have, say, a single-story home with three feet raised foundation and then on top of that they go up to, say, eleven feet on top of the raised foundation. So overall, now they are at eleven plus three, fourteen feet, fourteen feet as measured from the reference grade. So for all the portion of the house that has ceiling height at fourteen feet, inclusive of the foundation height, that area, say if it is six hundred square feet, that area will be calculated two times towards the FAR calculation. So we will do six hundred plus six hundred plus any other additional space that accounts towards the FAR calculation and then calculate the floor area ratio. So for a, at point four, for a seven thousand five hundred square feet lot, the FAR is at three thousand square feet. So if someone were to do vaulted ceiling for six hundred square feet of their home, essentially, thousand two hundred square feet of their home or FAR calculation already accounts for the vaulted ceiling. So they lose one thousand two hundred square feet just because they opted to do a six hundred square feet vaulted ceiling area.
Right, no, I understand that about the vaulted ceiling, because I remember that from the IDCO. I'm just talking about, okay, so it's three thousand square feet and they want to do interior ceiling height of, if it's over twelve feet, it applies to their FAR?
Two times.
Okay, so can you give me an example without the vaulted ceiling, but... So they have a three-foot crawl space, right?
Okay.
And then eleven feet, so that's fourteen feet. So two feet applies to?
So they exceeded the twelve feet now because they're at fourteen feet. So for all the portion or area of the home, that for that they are beyond twelve feet interior ceiling height, that portion of the house basically gets calculated two times towards their floor area ratio.
Oh, okay.
So, Councilmember Springer, if I can add, and I'm not as skilled in communicating it, but the one thing to be aware of, and I think you, as you went through the IDCO process, what Shipra is basically telling you is that we capture the raised foundation and the floor to ceiling height within that twelve-foot plate height. And if you decide to go beyond it, it's punitive because it's basically eating up what otherwise could be space you could use for living in just volume. And so that's how it keeps the building smaller and lower overall in size because you're eating up basically space, whether it's a combination of a raised foundation or a vaulted ceiling, you're eating up space that would otherwise be used if you just stayed within the twelve-foot plate height. If I understood and I said that correctly, Shipra, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
That was great, Fred. Thank you.
So, because there have been some concerns expressed to me, like, say, in the level areas, the flat areas. So there's no incentive for somebody to max out the twenty-two-foot plate height? Is that right? Because they lose FAR?
That's correct.
Well, to clarify, Councilmember Springer, I think, Shipra, one of the things, to be clear, whether it's on a lot that's relatively flat, it really depends on a couple of factors that have been discussed. If you have existing buildings with raised foundations or you have someone that's doing a raised foundation, you're gonna eat up space within, from the measurement of whether it's natural grade or finished grade, whichever is lower, up to that twelve-foot first floor, right, the plate height. And then if you go above that, let's say it was twenty-two feet, as is being proposed into the ZTA, you're going to be eating up space. And if you go beyond the bounds within the first and second floor with vaulted ceilings or really pronounced entryways, like two-story entryways, you're gonna get dinged with a count, a double impact on floor area. So it's gonna eat into your usable square footage. So it's not just the plate height per se, but it's what, the volume that happens within those points where you exceed twelve feet of plate height. And also, you can't go above the twenty-two feet. So the only thing that's gonna be above the twenty-two feet is any sort of slope roof width, and that's capped at thirty feet. So we're not changing the thirty-foot height, we're not recommending that be changed. But everything else is being affected by the plate height, which is those particular situations where you have houses with raised foundations or new ones being proposed or lots, like in this case, with a really dramatic slope that drops off on one side of the property that in essence affects, correct me if I'm wrong, Shipra, the ability to even take one floor and run it all the way across the property because in essence, effectively, because we have to follow the contours of the land, it actually creates the requirement that you in essence split the building down, you step it down based on when you're, where you're at in regard to the drastic slope.
Because there's been some concern expressed that, you know, the fear of mass and bulk with the twenty-two feet. So it's really, in a level area, flat area, it's a, there's a disincentive to go. It is twenty-two feet. Is that correct? They would go twenty feet?
So if it is on a flat lot and we are proposing a twenty-two-feet top of the plate height increase, first off, for any area interior of the house that exceeds twelve-feet height, they will be required to, that area would be required to count two times towards FAR, eating up their additional living space that they can have if someone chose to do that. Secondly, the flat portion of the lot, we don't know if that scenario includes a raised foundation or not or if there was any grading done. So the reference grade in that case is another mechanism through which we ensure that the increase in the plate height doesn't result in a massive structure. Third thing I want to point out is now with this, with this update, we are proposing the objective development standards for plain break, modulation and step back to be applicable to all single-family structures with two-story, which will offset the mass of the house. And this is the same principle which was used in the previous update. I can also show another document that talks about mass and bulk, which was actually used in the previous update. It talks about how the mass is not the enemy, but the arrangement of mass, which is the bulk. That is what dictates how bulky or how huge a structure looks. And I can pull it up on my screen here.
I see that in my neighborhood, on newer construction, I see how the modulation has worked. And so it's not massive next to a house. And I'm just concerned, you know, and I had my meeting with you and I'm just concerned about mass and bulk of, you know, the person downhill, basically. Because the illustration in the staff report, this one, it just doesn't, it doesn't have measurements on it and it doesn't, it's not realistic in terms of the slope up here outside of the designated hillside area, you know, just south of Sunset Canyon. And so that's the issue that people may support, you know, the ZTA and the streamlined process and the one step. And then the inclusion of the twenty-two-foot plate height is, well, is a bit confusing that that's, it seems like two different things to them. Like, yeah, let's do this, but then this is, it sounds like a major change.
The report that you have, council member, that is an example of a non-hillside lot and that was primarily an example showing that when someone grades it to make it a flat, flat pad, the reference grade on both the sides, well, previously it was lower grade and then now it has gone up as opposed to the other side where it was higher grade and they reduced it down to make it flat. The way the code right now has in place for calculation of height with respect to reference grade, it becomes difficult for a homeowner to continue the same interior height in that scenario. That was just an example to show for non-hillside lots, how a difference in grade would impact the interior height and the, you know, design of a home, even if someone were to grade it and make it flattened. And the other question with the twenty-two-feet top of the plate height increase, in the hillside, the view impact analysis would still be conducted for all proposed developments. So even with raised plate height, we will survey the neighborhood and we will take pictures to make sure none of the views for neighbors are being blocked.
Right, I understand that, you know, that's for the designated hillside, but there, you know, just down the street across Sunset Canyon, they're still sloped and they're concerned about mass and bulk because the slope is substantial, you know, on the frontage.
And this twenty-two-feet top of the plate height would not add to the bulk because we would be controlling the mass. It's a negligible increase in mass. And once we have the plain break modulations, they would, it would not look as bulky as, for example, some of the structures that today go through without, you know, a design guideline review and those houses that are at three thousand square feet and point three five FAR and are devoid of any plain break modulation. Additionally, there are other cities within the vicinity like Glendale, La Conyada, Flintridge, but similar to Ryan. And they have a top of the plate height at twenty-two feet and some of them don't even regulate the top of the plate height. So the reason, the intent behind allowing a homeowner to go two feet higher was just to give them flexibility in terms of design. And the increase in the mass would be offset by several different standards that we are putting, the plain break being the major one. But in addition, we are asking them to have the second-story footprint reduced at eighty-five percent and then the front porch limited at twelve feet, so it's not going to look massive. And in addition to that, we have the requirements of openings along the street-facing facade to incorporate breaks along the facade so that it's not a blank wall a person is looking at.
Okay, so if there is a crawl space of three feet on the frontage and so the plate height starts on that, they could only do, how high could that be?
So with a three-feet crawl space, that's already taking out three feet out of the proposed twenty-two-feet height. So that would restrict them to nineteen feet interior height.
Okay, and they don't have to go twenty-two feet. It's not a requirement. It's just an option. It's just a flexibility option.
That is correct.
Okay, that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, Anthony?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually wanted to expound a little bit on what Councilmember Springer was getting to. I'm not, personally, I'm not comfortable with a two-foot height increase across the board for all projects. And I'm wondering, Councilmember Springer, would you be open to the idea of instead of just a straight two-foot increase, if we actually created an exemption for these two- and three-foot foundations on the sloped grades? Because it seems to me that we're trying to fix a problem that only exists in these really sloped areas, whereas the flatlands, we don't need it. So for me, when I look at this increase and when I look at the description and what we're trying to solve here, it seems to me that if we actually did the opposite and simply exempted the first few feet when we do a foundation, I think we would get the same result.
Well, you know, originally I was, you know, looking at the illustration in this. I was going to support the ZTA but pull the section on the twenty-two-foot plate height because I feel like it needs, there needs to be better understanding about it. There's a lot of confusion about that. And maybe have a simple illustration of how that works with the measurements on it for the crawl space, the plate height, the roof. So, I mean, I feel like it's complicated. And for, especially for two new council members, you know, I originally wanted to just pull this section just for another look and to make sure.
I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable moving forward with the rest of the amendment, keeping it at twenty feet and then bringing back the twenty-two feet later. I'm okay with that. But I think, I think we have time tonight. If, I don't know, Mr. Ramirez or Mr. Prescott, is there a, is there a way to do something of what I asked for? Rather than increase the two heights for everybody across the board, we find an exemption so we don't double count the folks that have to do those small foundation increases on a grade? I mean, is that possible to do tonight? Or would you feel more comfortable moving forward, keeping it at twenty feet and then bringing back that two-foot increase at a later date?
Put some clarifying illustrations on how it would work for, so our residents could see and the explanation of the FAR and... Can we do that? Just pull that part and bring that back? After, it feels, I feel like there needs to be some work done on it. work done on it, you know, and have an illustration with measurements and how it would work simple.
Yeah, what, what I would, uh, if, if, I'm sorry to interrupt, um, Mayor or Ms. Springer, if I can chime in.
Sure.
Go ahead, Mr. Ramirez.
Okay, um, wh- what I would suggest, uh, unpacking and, and, you know, kind of having different, uh, plate heights based on slope, uh, would, would in essence require, you know, the, the way it was being set up was to have kind of one standard applied to make it easy for everybody to understand this is the maximum and kind of, uh, have it easily understood and not create, um, situations where we're now having, uh, questioning as far as, uh, different slopes and variations there. Uh, so that was kind of the intent. Uh, hearing what I'm hearing, um, what I would, what I would suggest is if that's the issue, that particular issue is one, um, I, I would say, um, instead of attempting to figure it out here, because I think there's a lot of, uh, factors, like at what slope do we then trigger, uh, you know, a one-foot increase? At what slope would we now be warranted to trigger the two-foot increase? That I would suggest that if that is the issue, I would suggest at this point, and, and, you know, and this is us recommending it, would be to just leave the plate height at twenty feet. And if we need to, and if there's, and, and we could go through a subsequent, uh, process and basically bring that back on its own and have all the analysis and have all the input from the public, we can do that as a separate endeavor. I, I think in the grand scheme of things, we heard feedback from residents that are having issues with this particular issue and the attempt was to try to alleviate it. But if there's a concern and this is kind of holding up all these other needed improvements, including, you know, elimination of single-family special development permit and applying it in the one-step plan check process with all the objective standards, I, I would suggest that if that is of concern to the council majority, that we just set that aside, leave it as is, and we'll come back to you and we'll go to, through a very thorough process so that we can show exhibits of where that situation is. And maybe to your point, um, if that's agreed to the council, that maybe there should be, depending on, uh, certain variables on slope and grade change, uh, allowing for some, um, exemption or, uh, allowed modification, but we can bring that, uh, back at a later date.
Right, and, and the goal is to be simple. I don't want it complicated and it could just be clarification. You know, like two feet maybe, but it's not clear about how it works. And there, there's not, in my opinion, a good diagram that illustrates how it works, you know, with the crawl space and the twenty-two feet.
Sure, I understand.
But that's, that's all. It could be, two feet could be perfect, but it's unclear. And, and I want people to have flexibility. I do, and I want it to be streamlined, but, um, I, I don't find that very clear. Lots of people, um, don't, so.
Yeah, I, I would ask Mr. Mayor, could we take a quick vote to see if we can keep it at twenty and then bring back, um, an amendment later? Just so we can move on with the rest of the-
Let me ask the city attorney what he thinks, uh, going in this direction. Is it a viable direction to go on?
Yeah, council has flexibility under the charter, section five hundred, to make amendments or modify an ordinance. The question becomes, how much do you do now and still adopt the ordinance versus engage in the public input that many of the speakers, uh, you, you, you had, I didn't do a count of how many, but there were plenty on both sides, uh, that are concerned by this issue, no doubt. So the county has, the, the council has the flexibility under the charter to make changes. Um, the method that Vice Mayor indicated is the typical approach that council and, and other bodies use, uh, to make a motion in a second to modify what's before them, uh, and, and to discuss it either at the end, before they make the main motion, collect them, make the motions and move forward, or, you know, it's up, up to the, uh, Mayor how you wish to proceed.
I believe one of the comments was to set this portion aside and just deal with the rest of it and move that forward and then have, like Mr. Ramirez said, have the, that portion that was set aside come back to us. Is that what we were talking about?
Right, in a, in a, in a clarified way, you know, how it works.
Vice Mayor, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, uh, basically, uh, my motion would be, uh, to, to keep, uh, top of plate at twenty feet and, uh, uh, direct staff to come back with a report on, uh, proposed changes for that top of plate at a later date.
With a clear, with a clear, obviously, explanation, diagrams, go ahead.
Mayor, may I, may I just get clarification? So, eh, you know, I, and I don't want to overstate this. If, if it's to amend the ordinance and leave the plate height as is and, and move the ordinance forward, then, then that would occur. And then if there's a direction for us to go through a zone text amendment to deal specifically with plate height, including, uh, public input, going back to the planning board, having that discussion and then giving a recommendation, I, I would just want to clarify that we'd undertake that effort on its own track and that way it allows for the further vetting and additional input that I'm hearing, uh, we've heard from residents and, and yourselves, I think, to a certain extent. So I just want to make sure when we're, uh, putting it aside, the reality of what we're saying is we're going to leave that section of the R1 standards as is. That would be considered with the zone text amendment. And then separately, if we bring it back to you, we would go through the zone text amendment for that particular, uh, consideration of plate height because that would be its own amendment to the code.
Right, undertake further study-
Sure.
-verification, including looking at, um, steeper slopes. And just show, showing some clarification of how it would work.
Let me ask, uh, Vice Mayor, that's his understanding as well?
Yeah, that's what I would include in my motion.
All right, so are you making a motion now then?
Um, as, as, still moved.
Second, uh, Councilmember Springer is seconding it?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So I'd like to ask staff if that, that motion in the second affects attachment one dash eight to change the reference to twenty-two feet in the middle of the page, one dash eight, to twenty. Is that the effect of the motion?
That is the intent, yes, or the effect, sorry, you're asking staff.
Yeah, he's asking staff.
I just want to make sure they understand the motion and where that number changes.
Shipper is at the location where the amendment is.
Verifying, give, give me a minute.
And, and Mr. McDougal, what was the page that you were referencing? I'm sorry.
It's attachment one dash eight.
One dash eight, thank you.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm looking at. I just want to confirm that that's the effect of the motion. It's, it's, uh, maximum height is the heading. The line under it is to top plate and its reference is twenty-two feet.
Yes, that's correct, Mr. McDougal.
Um, what is the timeline for, for that?
Well, if, if staff is going to do public input, uh, with the interest that the public has, I, I wouldn't think they could give you a timeframe on when that would come back. You've also asked for illustratives and a method for allocating the two additional feet. And I would imagine there's going to be substantial disagreement on how that happens. So, um, I wouldn't expect that staff's going to be able to give you a finite time.
Okay, colleagues, uh, any further discussion, uh, Vice Mayor?
Uh, yeah, just a couple of, uh, clarifying points. Um, on attachment one dash thirteen, under D floor area ratio, letter A, uh, attached garages and carports, uh, therefore four hundred square feet. These are excluded from the FAR calculation.
Mr. Mayor, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, uh, we have a motion in a second. Is the intent to vote on that modification and then move on to further items?
Yeah, I wasn't quite sure where the Vice Mayor was going with this. We have a motion in a second and then-
Sorry.
He just went off. Anyway, so is there any further discussion, colleagues? All right, let's take a vote on, on the motion.
Vice Mayor Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Springer?
Yes.
Councilmember Fudos?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Mayor Telemontes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now, Vice Mayor, did you want to ask-
Yes, just a couple of clarifying questions, thank you. Sorry, we skipped the whole vote. Um, under, uh, one thirteen, letter A, under D floor area ratio, um, it exempts the garages and carports for a cer- uh, up to a certain square foot. What happens when someone comes along later and turns that garage into an ADU? How does that change the FAR and is there a limitation there?
If someone, um, thank you, Vice Mayor. If someone were to come in and, uh, convert an existing garage to an ADU, ADUs by state law are exempt from FAR and lot coverage calculation. So those won't add to the FAR.
Okay, so no matter, okay, so under state law, all right, okay. All right, just making sure, okay, thank you. Um, and then, ch-ch-ch, real quick here. Uh, under attachment one thirty-one, one dash thirty-one, uh, letter B, uh, it says, uh, the driveways, right in the middle there, driveways must be no wider than twenty feet and the hardscaping is limited to forty-five percent. Um, I mentioned this to, uh, uh, Mr. Prescott earlier today. I got a, uh, email from somebody who can't, uh, park their car, uh, in front of their house because they're limited on the hardscaping. Um, how did we get to that number, twenty feet and forty-five percent? Like, i- in real practice, what is that going to look like? Is someone going to be able to park two cars next to each other? Are they stuck doing tandem? Like, how, how, how is, how is that going to look?
So the forty-five percent is existing code requirement of, um, limiting the hardscape surface within the front yard to forty-five percent. Um, is existing and we are maintaining that. If someone is able to comply with the forty-five percent and provide for, uh, twenty feet wide driveway width, um, that would be allowed as long as they have fifty-five percent landscaped area to park their car within their front yard. However, if someone, um, is not able to comply with the minimum fifty-five percent landscaping requirement, they wouldn't be able to have a twenty-feet-wide driveway width within their front yard. For tandem parking, if they have the depth, they can surely park it in a tandem way. But the intent behind twenty-feet-wide driveway was to have two car, uh, cars parked on, within the front yard.
Okay, okay.
And if I can clarify, uh, Vice Mayor too, just, I, I think there's been a, a miss, uh, maybe a misunderstanding of the facts and, and that is currently, where's lim- they're limited to the width of a driveway when you have a, a garage at the rear of the property. But as we know, as properties potentially convert to garage, uh, garage conversions to ADUs and now we are eliminating parking, now the need to actually have surface area to park onsite becomes ever more important because we don't want to have, uh, the demand for parking shift to then already limited asset, which is on-street parking. So what this would do is it would allow that additional space to accommodate onsite parking without affecting the actual driveway apron, the part that's in the street, so that we could keep the parking that's there, uh, as it exists. But what it does is it creates this other opportunity to park another vehicle onsite, which under the current code, absent this proposed change, would be precluded, uh, would preclude someone from doing so. And we've heard quite a few people, uh, have concerns with this. Over the last five years, I dealt with instances where people, uh, unbeknownst, just paved that portion because they needed the space and then we had to have them rip it all out because the code didn't allow for that. So that is, that's the reason for that.
Okay, okay, uh, that leads me to attachment one dash thirty-seven. Um, and there's actually a diagram there of the garage widths. So it says the maximum width of driveways at a curb shall be no more than twenty-five percent of the lot width with no single driveway exceeding fifteen feet in width. Um, so my question is, I've seen a couple of homes that have that U-shaped driveway where they can come in on one side of the property and leave on the other side and basically have two driveways. Is that going to be, is that out of code now? Has that always been out of code? Are we not allowing for people to have bigger space to come in and out? Like, what, what is that going on right there?
Um, so, uh, the circular driveway that you're referring to, um, we have an existing code section on that and, uh, the city planner, and if you look at number eight, uh, attachment one dash thirty-eight, uh, number eight, it talks about circular, uh, driveways. Um, I don't remember it top of my head, but then the lot width has to be a certain size, I think maybe seventy feet, um, for someone to accommodate a circular driveway. And there is a code requirement to have, uh, twenty feet, I think, uh, distance between two curb cuts. So tho- those would still remain, we are not, um, changing any of those. So for having a circular driveway, a homeowner would have to have a certain width in terms of their lot size and, uh, would need to have the required separation between the two, two approaches.
Mr. Vice Mayor, anything else?
Um, that wouldn't, I guess, what happens when your neighbor has a driveway right next to your property? Is that going to encroach on them at all or?
Uh, i- i- it wouldn't, it is for one particular lot.
Okay, all right, so the, the, the spacing between driveways is not going to affect my neighbor from precluding them from building something else?
I don't believe it, it does, Vice Mayor, but I can get back to you, uh, with more precise information at a later time.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're not, someone's not gobbling up all the driveway real estate and preventing their neighbors from, um, being able to have a driveway where they-
Yeah, Vice, Vice Mayor, I think I can speak to it. Um, the expansion of the driveway would be on their property only. It, it would not encroach into a neighbor or somehow preclude them from building out their property to the applicable standards. It's, it's pretty straightforward, yeah.
Okay, all right, uh, that's it for now, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Right, thank you very much. Colleagues, any other questions? Uh, Councilmember Fudos?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, my question is to the director, Mr. Prescott. Um, I, uh, I'm ha- I'm having, um, some heartburn by removing the, uh, basically the discretionary review process, public notice hearing that are mailed out to property owners. I, I don't want to see that taken out because I think it's important for a neighborhood, you know, they take pride in their neighborhood, that they want to know what's being built. And when they don't know what's being built until the excavator shows up the next day from a swimming pool to adding something, um, I, I feel that that's, that's not good for the, for the residents. I really would like to see if you can come up with a better idea to have something inclusive in the ordinance that is in front of us to vote on that would basically communicate to the neighbors, the residents, that, hey, you know, resident A is going to add a five hundred foot. I, I just think it's important for them to know. Mr. Prescott?
Yes, Mr. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Patrick Prescott, Community Development Director. Uh, Councilmember Fudos, I hear what you're saying. No one likes to be caught off guard, uh, especially right next door, right? Um, with the removal of the single-family special development process, there's no longer a discretionary process. So we don't typically send a notice out for ministerial, essentially, plan check, right? Um, there is part of our process that, that remains and that is that we currently require a sign, uh, to be posted when the building permit, uh, is, is issued. We could probably modify that part of it and put it up sooner. Uh, Mr. Ramirez, could we do that perhaps when it goes into plan check and then add the date of permit issuance or something? So people have a contact, they can call if they have a question. The, the concern about the, the notice is that there's this, you get a notice and it signifies something different is happening. And perhaps I can appeal this, right? And we don't want to give that false, that hope, so to speak. The other thing is we, and, and so I'll let Mr. Ramirez answer my question to him in a moment, but, uh, about when we post the sign. Um, but the other thing to consider is that we have two other ministerial byright processes uh, in single-family zones that do not require a notice or a sign. And that is ADUs and SB nine lot splits and, um, multiple primary units, right, duplex. So I'm just, I'm leery of attaching a process and a step to single-family homes that we cannot apply to, uh, essentially, you know, ADUs and, and SB nine projects. So, uh, Fred, maybe you could, uh, answer the question about the placement of the sign?
Uh, yes, I think, uh, Councilmember Fudos, to your point, uh, I totally hear the concern that we don't want to have people know that there's a project going on when we post the sign for actual construction. So if that is a concern, I think the way that we could address that is to have the sign posted- sign posted, uh, at the point that we actually get the application for plan check review so that as we're reviewing the plans to ensure compliance with the objective standards, the sign would be posted. And anyone that is interested sees the sign can contact the project planner and say, hey, what, what is, what's being proposed to be built? Uh, can you walk me through what they're proposing and how they're complying with the standards? I think that can be addressed by, uh, posting the sign during plan check as opposed to now that it's been approved with the building permit, and that would address the concern. If I can just, if you can indulge me for just a moment, uh, to Mr. Prescott's point, uh, effectively, you know, the public is looking at, uh, this process and saying, uh, am I hearing this right? And we had this conversation, the Director and I, about this, is that I can basically build an ADU with limited oversight by the city, or I can build two primary units and an ADU and a junior ADU on a lot, or split the lot, and potentially have eight units on a residential lot under SB nine, and it goes straight into plan check and it's a building permit. But yet, if I'm building my house and I'm wanting to do an addition and I'm doing it at point four or less, I have to go through discretionary review. And I, I just wanna make sure that that's also kind of laid out there because, in essence, what we're proposing now is to have on equal footing the ability to build a house to your needs and liking, as opposed to having to default to an ADU or another process that is effectively by right. And the noticing, I think, would, would address the concern, but that's just my opinion, but I wanted to make sure I threw that out there as well.
No, I appreciate it, and I'm gonna, uh, kinda weigh in from personal experience. So in my neighborhood, right next to my house, two ADU units were being built at the same time. And they made their own makeshift sign, and I didn't wanna get involved because I'm on the council, but my wife, who's not on the council, decided to look into it. And come to find out, what the sign said and what was actually being built were two different things. And I really felt strongly, from the experience that I went through, where one neighbor, uh, to the north of me was following the actual plans, ADU, and the one to the south of me clearly was a house flipper, because the house is sold to the permanent residents now. But where I'm going with this, it wasn't until my wife discovered that what they were doing and she was observing was not permitted. And the only checks and balances that we had as neighbors, not as a council member, because my wife did everything herself, was not being followed. And that's why I feel very strongly that there has to be a sign, a notice, that this project has been approved by the city and they're gonna be doing ABC. And I did appreciate, under Mr. Prescott's leadership, updating the website, that we found a lot of the, um, permitting, what was done. And so when we were looking, they were doing something totally opposite, and then my wife had a, called code enforcement, other neighbors were calling code enforcement. So the moral of the story is, I wanna make sure that we don't take away public noticing that gives the neighbors, uh, uh, you know, well-informed that, hey, CDD has, has given the approval for this ADU to be built, or additional five-hundred square, whatever the, the construction's going to do, but that this person followed it and if they have any questions. Because one of the other problems that we had is that they were doing illegal construction on a Sunday. And, you know, people need to know that. So if I was part of that, you know, for eight or nine months that I had to go through that as a private resident, when I'm preparing for this meeting and I'm looking at some of the emails that are coming in, I kinda have to agree with the folks that we shouldn't take away the noticing, the information, and basically a number for our residents to fall back on to call CDD or call code enforcement because they're working on a Sunday and they're trying to enjoy the Sunday or the holiday, which is not permitted. But to a lot of residents that are busy trying to make ends meet, going home to work, coming back, vice, you know, I really think it's important that we still have a posting. And those are my two cents, Mr. Mr. Prescott. I hope you can kinda understand my concern.
We understand, and I think, uh, Mr. Ramirez can, uh, perhaps, uh, propose a solution to the, the problem you mentioned, uh, with the, with the construction, the building permit construction sign.
I, I think what I, what I would say-
Mr. Ramirez, let me, let me add something. I agree with Councilmember Frutos one hundred and fifty percent. There was an incident as well that I was made aware of, neighbors coming to me and says, you know what, do you know what's going, building built down there? I go, no. There should be a sign. There was no sign. And I think they were through like fifty percent or almost seventy percent of the construction was done. No sign. Uh, and I'm sure some building inspectors or some kind of inspectors came through the facility, the, the location, and I would imagine that there's a checkbox that says, is sign in place? Well, there isn't, because it took several phone calls by the neighbors to the building department to finally get a sign in place. But all through the construction and everything that was being done there, and I'm su, like I mentioned before, I'm sure there were several inspectors that came through the facility, the, the residence, uh, but still no sign in place. So I agree with, with Councilmember Frutos because I know what you went through, uh, in regards to that. Uh, and let me ask you, Mr. Ramirez, how long would it be, like, we're talking about, uh, posting the sign in the beginning when they submit plans? Is that when it was?
So what, what I would suggest-
How long would that be? What time of timeline would that be?
What I would suggest is, instead of just the building, the sign when the building is actually being constructed, that we put a sign that has the information as far as, this is the scope of work, a project description, this is the project planner or city planning staff contact information, it's in plan check review, if you have any questions, contact this number. Then that same sign has a portion that if, if and when it is approved, the project's been approved on this date, here's the building permit number, if you have any questions or concerns, contact the city at this number. That sign would stay up from when it's submitted for plan check all the way through construction. So that it's there.
Give me some times, thirty days, sixty days?
Oh, well, it would, let's just say plan check takes us a couple of months. It would be posted from when it's in plan check, and the construction could take, let's say for a house, six to eight months. It would be up there the whole time. So there would be a number that you could call, hey, they're, they're working on Sunday. Hey, what's the requirement? The, the important part is that the sign would be the responsibility of the city, of the planner, to review the information for accuracy to, uh, Councilmember Frutos' point, verify that, confirm that it's been posted, and then have a physical photograph of what was posted in the system. So we can do that through the process.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, um, on this point, um, raised by both Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Frutos, uh, Mr. Ramirez, would that requirement be part of the application process? Or would you need to require this ordinance that's before the council tonight?
I think, I think we can include it within the application process, and, uh, it, it include it in the application process when it comes through, because it would apply to all residential projects.
So in order for an application to be deemed complete within the first thirty days of submittal, they'd have to demonstrate that the sign was posted and provide evidence?
That is correct.
Okay.
Uh, Councilmember Frutos, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. While we're on this topic, uh, would it be possible to list, um, uh, code enforcement? Because a lot, and, and not just for my instance, but for everybody across the city, because we've all received a couple emails of illegal construction going on on Sundays and holidays. And I, I really feel that with the sign, there should be, um, you guys don't know what number to put down, but to allow the residents the opportunity that if somebody's doing construction on a Sunday, and it's not the owner, because our charter only allows the owner to do their own construction, but when they hire a third person, you can't do it on a Sunday or holiday. And this is a big issue for the residents. Um, I like to see that the sign has a number, instead of them calling a council member and waiting, that, hey, they can call directly whatever code enforcement is responsible for the project, that they're on top of these concerns, because as we've seen more and more ADUs coming online and, and the topic of the ordinance to help people get their projects done, at the same time, we also wanna balance, you know, the concerns of the people to protect their neighborhood and their tranquility on a Sunday and a holiday, because a lot of people get frustrated that it's happening and happening, they'll send three or four emails to all the council members that we're not doing anything, or who did, all they need is information. Who's the code enforcement officer that I can reach out to so they can immediately touch bases and follow up, uh, with them to say, hey, look, this is what's going on on a Saturday and Sunday or a Monday, and, you know, kinda go from there. Can we add that?
Yes, sir. Easy add-on, easy fix.
Perfect. Man, I like that. Thank you.
Good job, Councilmember Frutos, quick fixes. Vice Mayor Anthony?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'd like to add two things to, uh, what, uh, Councilmember Frutos is suggesting. One, could we get, uh, the front of, uh, rendering of what the house or construction would look like on that as well? I know it's an image that they have to submit, so if we have that ready to go, can we require that that be part of that sign that's out front? So when people walk by, they go, oh, that's what they're building? That would be some questions. And then the other thing is, uh, I know a sign out front is great for the people right across the street, but like me personally, if someone's doing construction behind where I'm living, I, I don't know what's going on and it's gonna keep me up at night. So can we do like a little bit of noticing, maybe a hundred or a hundred and fifty feet around? So like, the guy behind you, the guy to your left and right, he's maybe not driving past your house, is that, is that possible? And I know we're limited for the, the ADUs, because that's sort of a, a state law, we really can't change that. But for our own stuff, I'd really like to see that little bit extra. It doesn't have to be the whole block, right? Not up, all up and down the street, but just maybe a hundred and fifty feet.
It's all, it's all with money, right? It all costs money. Uh, you know, and you might have some unintended, unintended consequences doing that. Where do you limit it? I mean, how, I don't know, maybe Mr. Ramirez or Ms. Rogers?
I mean, yeah, I mean, I think, I, I think it's, you know, it's per view of the council. I, I think having the sign up, especially prior to construction, having the sign up during construction, and putting in all the information that's been requested, both from code enforcement, call number, uh, building and planning, um, you, you've got, uh, quite a bit of, you know, and, and for the period of time that we're talking about, could be quite some time, there's already that information available. I think my concern is adding additional notification of adjacent property owners. Uh, it's another process, another process we have to track. And, and then what's the question is, how long do we have to post that notice for? Uh, do we do it at the beginning of plan check? Is it during building? I mean, it just, it kind of, uh, starts growing from there. I, I think, i- if you are all amenable, I think having the sign up for a really long time, I think, and making sure that it stays up and that it's maintained, um, is gonna address a lot of the concerns. Cause I, what I'm hearing is wanting to know when this thing is still an idea, a concept submitted for plan check, people have, should have the right to know, and then know that it's not gonna change unless it's so noted on the sign, and then they pull their permit and they have who to address concerns with ongoing except the, uh, instead of phone calls to the council members. So I think that can all be done with that sign, uh, and that would be consistent. And by the way, just so you know, uh, similar approach for signage would be for posting for the ADUs and SB nine projects. We can do it one consistent way. I, I kinda wanna continue to hammer home, the more consistent we are across the board for single-family, the easier it's gonna make for us to review. But if I gotta splinter off time to verify that, you know, affidavits are being sent out, that legal, legal recorded people are being co, uh, contacted and mailed, it's just adding more time to the equation of when I can actually just review the plan check. So, uh, that, that would be my recommendation, is to just focus on the sign, make sure it has all the information you want, and post it as soon as possible when we get the plan checks submitted.
And include that photo.
And include the photo. Yeah, that should not be a problem.
Okay. All right. I'm comfortable with that.
And that's one thing that I'm hearing, consistency. We want consistency, not only from staff, I hear from the residents, you know, because one, and, and we've heard it over the month, so we've got emails. I've, I talked to this planner and he gave me this answer. I spoke, he went away or got another job somewhere, or he's on vacation. So I spoke to this planner, Planner B, and he interpreted it a different way. So we got two or three different, right? And so we have to be consistent. I mean, so we start splitting up, can we do this? Can we do that? Now you lose consistency, now you're back to where we started. People saying, you know, they don't know what they're doing. I go one day and they give one answer, I go the next day and I get another answer. So anyway, uh, Councilmember Frutos, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, to our legal scholar, do I need to make a motion for direction on this one here? Or is there enough information there that, uh, you'll change this? Uh, what's the, what's the rules say, uh?
So, um, this isn't, that's why I wanted to clarify with Mr. Ramirez. Um, I didn't see in this ordinance that there was signage, but they have a, um, requirements under the Permit Streamlining Act, uh, for what constitutes a complete application, and they already have a thirty-day time period, which is why I use that terminology. So I think, um, you could make a motion, but, but the Director can change those requirements, and they simply report back to the planning board. Um, so there, there doesn't need to be a formal action in this meeting for them to, to make that requirement.
So it's understood, after all this discussion?
Do you mean notice would be included in the application?
Good job. Excellent. Uh, Councilmember Schultz?
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you to my colleagues. I really appreciated the discussion about top plate and Councilmember Frutos. Um, I completely concur with the point you made about noticing, so thank you for bringing that up. I just wanted to take one half-step back. The only remaining thing on my checklist was, so when we talk about the single-family special development permit, I, I read in the staff report, so current processing times are twelve to sixteen months, correct? Okay. And so you're saying that, you know, with these changes and the modifications we've talked about tonight, you believe that that review time can be cut down to about three to eight months? Is that right?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. So the only thing I'd like, and I don't know if it needs a, a vote of, of direction from council, or if you can just come back with it, but the one other complaint that I've heard that I don't think was addressed tonight was the fact that the ordinance passed in twenty seventeen, and now it's five years later. So much time has passed. We're only now revisiting it. And there's some notable changes that we're talking about tonight. So what I would personally like to see, if, if my colleagues are in agreement, is I'd like to see this come back maybe, you know, eighteen months from now, um, preferably even sooner, but I'd like to get a gauge of two things. One, is it actually working? Are we cutting those review times down as promised? And if not, are there other modifications we need to make? And then similarly, we are making some changes to the objective standards. Um, I would like to see how those are playing out and if further modifications are made. So I guess that's the ask. I don't want another five years to go by before we revisit it again. I'd like this to be coming back before the council within, uh, eighteen months. And, um, I guess, I don't know, I'd like to hear what my colleagues think, and I don't know if that's something that requires direction from, uh, council, but that's where I'm personally at.
Mr. Mayor, may I respond?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mayor, City Council, Patrick Prescott, Community Development Director, again. Uh, Councilmember Schultz, I think that that's a good idea. I think we can, eighteen months is enough time to get some projects processed, approved, and under construction. Um, I would also like to show the council progress along the way, uh, as these changes are implemented and we fully staff up, so that you can see that you're getting the return on investment that you've made in, in CDD staff and other resources. So I, I think we can do that for sure.
That's excellent. So we can, can we just, uh, Mr. McDougall, can we just incorporate it into our discussion tonight?
Sure. It could be tagged on to a motion to adopt, um, or, or, you know, staff can take the direction you gave already. Mr. Prescott indicated he would come back. So because it's not an amendment to the ordinance, it doesn't have to observe the same formalities.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember, uh, no, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Anthony?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, my last point here, I wanted to ask a little bit about the appeals process. Um, now, under the review, we had discretionary approval, so we allowed appeals to both the planning board, and then you could appeal that appeal to the city council. What is the, um, what is the path forward now for somebody who notices that, you know, the law is not being complied with? Is it just code enforcement? Is it just calling the number and reporting them? How does, how does a neighbor look to their left and see somebody not complying? And what do they do?
So I, I'll, I'll take this one ship for it. Um, so, so two things to kind of, uh, I think, close the circle. If we understand that all the objective standards that have already been in place, and now we're not modifying, uh, the plate height, and we've now codified all the, um, codified all the neighborhood compatibility checklist items into measurable, objective standards, all those are going to be reviewed as part of plan check. And the issuance of the building permit is contingent on compliance with all those requirements. So if someone goes off reservation, i.e. does something not in compliance with the objective standards, it's a violation of the city code. It's the zoning regulations, but it's a violation of the city code. And therefore, at that point, code enforcement would initiate the review, identify a notice of violation, and then the corrective action is they need to address the violation within a reasonable period of time. And if that corrective action requires modification of what's built in the field or demolition, then that's the requirement. So the, the trigger to ensure that they're going to abide by the standards is the identified violation and the corrective action that's on the city to enforce through our process.
Sure. No, I understand that. My, I guess my question is, how does code enforcement find out? Like, is it up to the neighbor to call? Is it up to the person across the street who notices something different? Do they call code enforcement and say, hey, the picture I'm looking on the sign that's in front of their place that we've now approved is going to happen? It doesn't look like what they're building. Because, I mean, I mean, code enforcement is not out there every day measuring everything and checking everything.
No, there's a building, so there's a building inspector that is approving different facets of the construction. So foundation, framing, you know, exterior lathe, mechanical, electrical, that's the building inspector looking at the plans and reviewing the day on a case by case, you know, on a day by day basis. But even then, if, if someone looks at the, the posted sign and says, hey, why is that different? They would make the inquiry through the phone numbers that are noted there. They could call planning and building and safety. And then we would investigate what's built with the building inspector. And if there's corrective action, then code enforcement would, in essence, start that process to initiate corrective requirements and ensure that when we have to review any modifications to the plans, that those are also consistent with the applicable standards.
Okay. And then I guess my last question is, if, if a neighbor is, calls the number and for whatever reason, code enforcement comes out and, you know, misses it or doesn't catch whatever they're doing or something like that, I don't know what it could possibly be. Is there a method for the, the resident who notices the violation to go directly to council and say, please investigate this, please ask code enforcement? Is that still a viable option? Or once code enforcement makes that determination, is, is there no other oversight? So, yeah.
So I, I think, Vice Mayor Konstantin, I think there's a, I just want to make sure, you know, if there's a discussion about an appeals process on the review of a proposed plan, that would, that, that talks about the review of what's proposed to be built.
Right.
Right? That, so once you've issued a building permit, it's in a different stratosphere, which, which we're talking about right now. So I just want to make sure I understand that in the process of construction, that process hasn't changed. That has, continues to be, either it's identified through inspection, or if adjacent property owner notices a violation of some sort, or it thinks there's a violation and we investigate it and we deem it to be true, that corrective action process is still one that's gone through the process of the city. That would never preclude an individual from saying, hey, I think there's an issue. I don't think it's being resolved, and contacting, you know, the city council. But from what I've heard, the council wants this to be addressed at a staff level through the requirements that are in place and ongoing as objective standards. And I think what's in front of you with the changes that you've already noted would address those issues. And, and the onus is on the city to enforce the regulations as they are currently in effect and would be after the adoption of the standards, because what you're talking about is what happens during construction.
Okay, because the one thing I don't want to happen is people thinking that there's no more appeals process. And so they think they can get away with a little bit more. And so what I'm going to be asking is that during this new portion of passing this ZTA moving forward, and in the next 18 months before you come back to us, that code enforcement stay on top of the ball in a way that they haven't done before. I want, I would like to see increased scrutiny on these kinds of projects. Because what we're telling the public is that we don't need the appeals process anymore because we have objective standards, and that's what's going to replace it. So the last thing I want to see is these objective standards being muddled and forgiven and sort of bent, and not necessarily broken, but bent in ways that allow for leniency. And I don't, I don't want that to happen. I hope it doesn't happen. And I just encourage the Community Development Department to really, really take that under consideration. Because you're going to have people who are, even if one gets passed, you're going to have folks who are very upset.
But we understand.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Anthony, we hear you. We agree. And we have a solid team of code enforcement inspectors and building inspectors who can work together to ensure that if someone is not building something consistent with the approved plans, that that is remedied.
Excellent. Now, Councilmember Schultz, was your concern addressed that we, that you get?
I, I think so, Mr. Mayor. It sounds like Mr. Prescott's prepared to come back within 18 months and provide his progress reports along the way. So I'm comfortable with it.
All right. Perfect. Thank you. Councilmember Springer?
A question about the plate height of ADUs that are on top of garages. What is that maximum plate height allowed? But, I mean, that's a state regulation, right? Because I see second story ADUs going up on top of garages. What's the maximum of plate height?
Yeah, I'll defer to the frontline planners on that one, but I think Chip, maybe we ought to answer the question.
So when ADUs constructed on top of an existing structure, they cannot exceed 20 feet top of the plate height and 23 feet top of the roof height.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Colleagues, anybody else? Questions? We're ready to entertain a motion then. Who's stepping forward? Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I hope this is with enough specificity, but if not, I'll do my best to correct it. I move that we adopt the ordinance as amended on the council floor tonight. Second?
Okay, there's motion, a second. Any further discussion? Okay, Madam City Clerk?
There's also a resolution.
I'll amend my motion. I also move the resolution as well.
Thank you, sir. And the second?
I agree with the second, yes.
Okay. Madam City Clerk?
Okay. That's Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Frutos?
Yes.
Councilmember Springer?
Yes.
Mayor Telemontis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Excellent discussion, colleagues. Councilmember Frutos, excellent suggestion, as well as Vice Mayor Konstantin and Councilmember Schultz. Okay, moving forward. Let's see here. We're going to item, agenda item number eight. The fifth report this evening is a review of the Royal Verdugo Transit Operator's Bus Electrification Feasibility Study and Approval of a Burbank Bus Electrification Transition Policy. Presented this report is David Krisky, Assistant Community Development Director for the Transportation Division. Mr. Krisky, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Yes, my name is David Krisky, Assistant Community Development Director. Tonight, before you this evening, we are asking you to review the city's recently concluded Transit Vehicle Electrification Study that was completed with partnership of Calstart, as well as the cities of Glendale and Pasadena. And then based upon that study, to consider adopting a policy for how to transfer our fleet to electric or zero emission vehicles, which allows us to begin the transition that's required by new state legislation. Tonight I have a presentation that I'll begin here in a second, but we'll basically go over where we've been with the study, talk about the study's findings and the implications for our service, talk about some costs, and then outline some options for the council to consider in making a potential transition in line with these regulations. So let me begin by sharing my screen.
Just one minute.
There we go. Thank you. Is everyone able to see that?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Sorry.
Thanks. So with that, I'll go into some background, as I said, of the, of the study, how we got to begin that study and, and work through that with our partners, go through the recommendations of the study, look at some funding opportunities, and then again, as I said, some policy alternatives and recommendations. So for some high-level background, a few years ago, the California Air Resources Board, or CARB, passed, adopted the Innovative Clean Transit Regulation. And the purpose of this regulation is to transition the state's transit operations to zero emissions. For small agencies like Burbank, there's a tiered requirement for when we must begin to use zero emission vehicles in our, in our system. We are required to procure one quarter or 25% of any new buses that we purchase for our system. They must be zero emission starting in 2026. And then by 2029, any bus, all buses that we may need to buy for our service must be zero emission, with the overall goal that by 2040, we are a zero emission system and do not have any, any fossil fuel buses in our fleet at that time. Back in 2020, early 2020, the city council approved an MOU with the cities of Glendale and Pasadena to conduct a study with Calstart, a company that's, and research firm that's involved in transit and electrification, to study what it would take to meet this new requirement. This was a grant-funded study that we, the three cities, received through the California Department of Transportation. Calstart conducted the feasibility study for the three cities. Pasadena led the administration of the grant, and Calstart completed the feasibility study for Burbank, and we're here to share with you the study's findings tonight. So the overall public policy reason for this is that transitioning transit vehicles to zero emission obviously reduces toxic air emissions and greenhouse gases, which supports the state's climate goals to reduce both of those issues and pollutants going into the environment. GHG emissions, of course, are CO2 emissions. And you can see the graph here, CNG transit vehicle, which, you know, 20 years ago was relatively clean burning, is still not a good emitter of GHG emissions. And if you compare that to a battery electric bus, for example, which is one type of zero emission vehicle, the GHG emissions per vehicle are much lower with, with electric. The same holds true with smog emissions. Smog are all of the other pollutants that we see in the air and breathe in the air that aren't good for us. And CNG is definitely much higher, both in terms of the upstream emissions, what the emissions output is for the propulsion to propel the CNG, as well as the actual tailpipe emissions of burning the CNG. When you have a battery electric vehicle, you have no tailpipe emissions and the upstream emissions, meaning the emissions generated by, by producing the electricity for the bus is also lower. So there is a policy, a good policy reason for converting transit fleets in California to zero emission. So we completed our study at the very beginning of this year. It's, it's included with your staff report as an attachment. But we're here tonight to talk about the high-level conclusions of that transition, and then more importantly, what does that mean for us moving forward as an operator of transit? So the high-level conclusions of our study were that in transitioning to zero emission, battery electric buses are preferred over hydrogen fuel cell buses, which is another form of zero emission vehicle that uses hydrogen to either burn fuel to propel the bus or to create electricity to propel the bus. Battery electric technology is more mature. Battery electric vehicles are currently less expensive to implement. Both technologies, I will say, require significant infrastructure investments, and we'll, we'll go over that in a second. But battery electric vehicles are a little bit more straightforward to, to implement and to provide infrastructure for. Also, as a side note, the city has had a poor experience with fuel cell electric buses about 10 years ago. We were at the very bleeding edge of this technology and trying to roll out a hydrogen fuel cell bus to gauge how that fuel would work. And we didn't have a good experience with it. We were never able to get it running reliably. And we showed, kind of showed and helped the industry see that fuel cell vehicles at the time still had a lot of room to grow, to be reliable and able to be used on a public transit service. They have come farther since that time, as I understand, but we did have a poor experience that kind of shades us, at least at a staff level, away from, from hydrogen fuel cells. So Calstart looked at both technologies and is recommending battery electric technology. The cost to make this transition is really the biggest issue that drives some of the policy options that we're going to talk about. As I mentioned, and as the study shows, the cost to convert to a battery electric fleet is very high. Not only are the vehicles themselves more expensive than a typical standard vehicle, transit vehicle, but the electric infrastructure needed to charge those vehicles and to have all the reliability and resiliency to deal with a fleet that's now electric, that needs to be recharged, is also very expensive. Obviously, the, the do nothing approach, or the just maintaining business as usual, if that were available to us, has a cost as well. And that cost is borne out in terms of all the fuel, and also the replacement of all of the buses that we have to make over time to run our service. And of course, as you know, we have two services, our fixed route service, Burbank Bus Fixed Route. That's, requires about 17 vehicles to operate. And then our senior disabled service is our dial-a-ride for seniors and those with disabilities. That has a nine-vehicle fleet of smaller, cutaway, traditional gasoline engines that all would be, need to be converted to electric to meet the mandate and is included in this cost. And then you'll see that the fuel cell electric fleet, which is the, the hydrogen is a little, is higher still, and we're not recommending that. So we're going to talk from this point further about battery electric buses. But of course, at the end, if the council has questions about the technologies, we can, we can respond to that. The one big asterisk to these already large numbers that you see on this table is that the city has an additional compounding problem, which is that we don't have our own bus facility currently. What we do today is we hire a contractor. In this case, we currently have MV Transportation as our operator, and they provide us a leased facility to operate our service out of. It's currently a facility just to the south of us, kind of on the border of Glendale and City of Los Angeles. It's, it's a space that they lease, and they operate our service out of that facility and have all of the maintenance done there, the washing, the administration, everything that's needed to run our service is held out of a leased facility. The problem with that is you can't make the millions of dollars of infrastructure investments into a leased facility, because A, you don't, we as a city don't own it, so why would we invest resources in that facility? And if a operator were to do it for us, that's not something that's, that can be done economically on the typical, you know, three to five-year time period of an operations contract. They, they have a hard time locking themselves into that major capital investment. So what we would have to do to transition to a zero emission or an electric fleet, just as kind of our, under our current framework, is also secure a bus facility in a bus yard somewhere. And, and we don't have land for that now, so we'd have to go out and actively seek new land or find a site and then develop the facility. And of course, you know, we'd look for grants and other sorts of things, but it would be a very expensive endeavor. We expect that could be another 30 million on top of the 13 million delta of the battery electric. So these are obviously large, large numbers. So because of that, we're at a bit of a crossroads in how we as a city want to proceed with transit, with the understanding that in about four years, we need to start seeing where we, we need to start thinking we need to start seeing where we we need to start thinking about how we're going to begin transitioning to zero emission or electric buses. And so because these costs are so significant, we really need to look at the city at how to move forward to begin to to develop that response to that. And so we have four policy options for the council to consider for moving in that direction. Giving some council policy direction to the staff tonight can help us start that plan and get us going with how to begin to respond to this. And it's out, the the four options are outlined in your staff report. And I'll briefly go over them here. And then we'll talk about some of the costs of implications of those. So the first option before you is to convert our current system model, both in terms of our both of our fixed route and our senior disabled, kind of our current system model, converting it to battery electric buses. So under that option, we're doing everything like we are now, where we hire an operator to run our fixed route service. We have our in-house senior disabled. We are buying electric vehicles, and we are finding a place to maintain and charge them. So that's kind of the full implementation of both converting to zero emission and also securing a bus facility. So the pros in that in that are we get to maintain the most independence of running our service. We can remain completely independent as Burbank Bus. We can continue to provide the service as we do today, and we're just electrifying it. The downsides, of course, are the high costs. That that $13 million plus $30 million is a big dollar amount. And we would have to begin now identifying funding streams to to meet that cost because we would likely need to look at federal grants and other grants to begin to pay for that. That's also a whole separate endeavor at the staff level to secure the right staffing resources to pursue that. It's a big project. It's a big capital project and a big and a big option. But it is one that is available to the council if that's the way the the council wishes to proceed. Option two is kind of the opposite of that, is we would translate our model for how we operate today to a model where we are procuring all transit services and capital from a third-party, public or private operator that complies with the electrification or will comply. And that third-party operator would provide everything. So they provide the the buses. They provide the charging infrastructure. They provide the operations. They provide the site. Everything would be all in. We would pay for that with a simple monthly cost of service, service hour. So for every for every number of service hours per month we need to run our service, we would just pay a cost, and it incorporates all of that together. To be honest, that option is somewhat of a theoretical option. We've we've talked informally with our our partner, MV, which is a national transit operator, and asking them how they're responding to cities like ours. And are they offering those services? And they have told us frankly that that would be very difficult to do so for the reasons I mentioned earlier. It's hard to capitalize all of that cost just for a three-to-five-to-seven-year operations contract. So it it may be a theoretical discussion to think about that. The more likely implementation of two would be we would contract with, say, a Metro or an LADOT or a Glendale to just buy the service from them. And they're doing it for themselves. And then they're just selling it to us on an hourly cost that we that we buy and evaluate every few years. So that would be option two, is to really go all in with a third party to have that provided for us. Option three is a little bit similar to option two, but a little more nuanced. We would, we would look to cooperate with our neighbor, Glendale. Glendale has obviously had to do the similar study to us. They're under the same mandates. And they're were they're dealing with their mission to transfer to zero emission and are also looking at battery electric vehicles. The one big benefit that they have is they've spent the last 10, 12 years securing the funding to do what I just talked about us having to do with option one, which is they have their own facility. They opened it, I think, in 2020. They own it. They just built it. It's funded. They're operating out of there. And so what we would do with option three is to begin talking with them about how we can cooperate with Glendale to electrify their brand-new facility for both themselves and also for us, so that by 2026, we could begin to transition to locate, co-locate with them to operate our service. And then we could then begin to procure battery electric buses for us in 2026 and use their facility. This option, it could be a very loose cooperation where we're still very independent potentially. Or it could be something where we're really actually combining with Glendale in some way. And they're actually, we're actually, you know, merging to some degree where we're kind of almost operating one transit service for both cities. There's a range, I think, where we could pursue any anything along those lines, depending upon what Burbank would like to do and what Glendale is interested in 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 doing that with us. So we thought this was an interesting option. The pros, of course, is we don't have to secure a transit facility and that huge extra cost. The 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 cons to this is that it's a new arrangement. It obviously involves working with another city and figuring out the legal framework and cooperating framework for how to do that. And that's going to take some time to figure out and figure out how it would work for both cities. It also might, in the short term, result in a little bit higher cost per hour just because they, their costs for MV are a little bit higher than ours today just because of the way their service is slightly different. On the other hand, with economies of scale, we're going to be bigger together than we are individually. So we might actually get a little bit of savings because we're bigger. So that's a little bit of an unknown. So there's, there's a little bit of variability in how that could go. But this is another way to to meet the electrification mandate by partnering with our neighbor, who's a little bit further along in the game than we are. And then option four is, of course, the easiest, but it's the most drastic for providing service, which would be to discontinue everything by 2026. So obviously, we don't need to be bound by the ITC regulation if we're not running transit. And so discontinuing all Burbank Bus services, that includes both fixed route and senior disabled, means that our residents and employees fall back to the underlying regional services with Metro and Access and potentially other services nearby, Glendale, LADOT. We have some service with them already. But we would be relying on on other agencies to provide our transit. Of course, we would also see a significant savings of about $4 million a year in local return that we could divert to other transportation projects. So there's not, we would be losing transit mobility that is controlled by Burbank, but we'd be gaining revenue to do other transportation goals, such as complete streets or other things. So this is obviously probably the easiest option, but has the highest impact to mobility for people that rely on our service. So we tried to tally up the incremental costs of these four options. And I want to clarify that these are very high-level order of magnitude for comparison purposes, to give the council an idea of the differences. One thing about our cost model and our cost analysis in the study itself is because we don't have a transit facility, the capital costs are even rougher than they would be if we knew where we were, you know, already housing our buses because we would know exactly, could analyze exactly what tran, uh, electric infrastructure would be needed to serve a specific facility. But we don't have one, so it's a little bit higher level. And then some of the other variables for these costs are really not known in any precise way until we go down the road of of pursuing one of these options. So but with that being said, we we have good confidence in this order of magnitude. And they're pretty drastic in that you can see the the differences. So obviously, option one, the converting of our existing model to battery electric, $43 million. That's $13 million for the electric infrastructure and buses, and $30 million for a new transit facility. So that's a huge cost. Options two and three are much lower. They're really just the incremental cost of the of the electric vehicles and the infrastructure. We think that number two is kind of amortized over a a third-party contract that we're just paying by the hour every year to to pay that. Whereas number three involves capital with Glendale to help them electrify their their facility to add us as a as a member and then our buses. We think that three actually might be a little less than $12 million because there may be some economies of scale, as I was mentioning. If we're electrifying for Glendale, it may be just a little bit more to add our buses. So conservatively, they're the same, but number three could be a little lower. And then finally, number four, discontinue all Burbank Bus services over the life of the study, which was, again, till studying all of the costs to the year 2040. We would have a $17 million savings, which is because we're not having to buy and replace vehicles with electric vehicles and invest in electric infrastructure. In addition, of course, we have the operating savings as well. It's not reflected there. This is just really the capital. So a very wide band of costs for the options moving forward. One big asterisk I want to add to this is impacts to senior and disabled transit. Policy options two and three, we believe, would require changing our senior disabled service such that it's contracted out rather than being held in-house. And we wanted to be very upfront with the council because this is a sensitive subject in terms of our workforce as also in terms of our, those that use senior and disabled and really rely on us as providing kind of that very extra-mile, very personable, familiar service with with city employees. We don't think that two and three can be done with the way we currently are arranged, primarily because if we were to partner with a third-party or with the City of Glendale, or anyone else for that matter, those options for senior disabled are always contracted out. And so to meld a city operation into a contracted or other city system, I think, would be problematic. Option four, obviously, would have impacts that we wouldn't have it anymore. So that's obviously bad. Option one, we would likely stay with the current with the current city model, although we wouldn't have to. But that one would preserve our ability to to keep business as usual with senior disabled. So again, we've got some years to figure this out. But choosing a road now would involve us making some decisions about senior disabled going forward that we want the council to be aware of. So our staff recommendation, based on what I've presented this evening and what's in the study, is that we believe the council should direct us to look at option three. We think that coordinating with Glendale is a lower cost to electrify while still allowing us to have a local transit service, which we think is beneficial and provides mobility benefits that are important, especially as the pandemic ends. And we're still faced or we're back and facing in in our face with this three-to-one jobs-housing balance and all the traffic that brings in and providing mobility options for employees and residents. So we think that we should begin discussions with Glendale about how co-location and collaboration would work and to collaborate with them on infrastructure grants, which they're already pursuing because of things like the infrastructure bill with the feds that was that was recently passed. There's money starting to become available, and they're actually going after it already. And so we would help them. And then we would implement a phased transition to battery electric with this timeline that by 2026 or later, we'd start buying battery electric. That would mean that we would be purchasing six grant-funded CNG buses this year. We have grant funds for six. We've kind of held back three of them to figure out what we want to do with this electrification plan. But we've got, if we want to spend that money, we need to do it soon. And and because we're not ready for electrification, because our fleet is very old, and even with some changes with the green route that we might be considering later this year, we are getting very old with our fleet and need to replace them. And so we would recommend that we phase it in with still buying CNG this year with these grant funds that are in hand. And then we begin purchasing electric vehicles between 2026 and 29, and then another slew of them after 2029, so that by 2040, we're fully electric. And that would be tied in to when Glendale's facility is ready to support electric vehicles, both ours and theirs. We discussed this with your Transportation Commission. In December, we gave them an overview of the overall study and some of the findings and what we looked at. And then we came back to them last month with these four policy options to give them a kind of a preview before taking it to you and to see what thoughts they had. We didn't ask for a specific recommendation. We wanted to leave that to the council, but we wanted to get their input on what they thought. And here are some of the, some of the themes that we talked about with them that they brought up to us after hearing our presentation and looking at the study. They did mention, at least a couple of the commissioners, and one in particular, talked about how hydrogen, while it is more expensive and has other problems, could provide some co-benefits beyond transit because some of the ways that power companies and how Burbank is going to have to kind of load balance electric power when the sun goes down and you have to store that power for nighttime, hydrogen is a way to do that. And I'm starting to talk out of my expertise, but they pointed out that hydrogen could bring benefits beyond just transit. So that is, that is a good point. They were generally supportive with the idea of coordinating with Glendale for the reasons that I talked about for this electrification, but also because there's maybe an opportunity to better provide service between the two cities. There's probably, I think, an untapped demand for local trips between Glendale and Burbank or West Glendale and South Burbank that is hard to make right now and could be improved with some coordination. We should probably be doing that regardless, but this would even be an opportunity to really underscore that. So that's something they thought was worth pursuing or worth mentioning. They were very worried about the high costs, especially given our low ridership generally and our low ridership specifically during COVID. That's a high cost, especially that option one, relative to our ridership. They did note that this technology is probably going to get cheaper over time. And so by 2026 even, and certainly as we get into the 2030s, maybe these costs come down and it's not so expensive. So it is, they were worried about the cost, but noted it could improve over time. And then we talked about overall changes in ridership and how the overall, the service model of how we provide transit may be changing. Is fixed route still relevant? And if it is, maybe it's just one or two routes, and then we're augmenting it with more point-to-point service or microtransit or or things that Metro provides. They were concerned that that as we're making electrification shifts, we're also having to deal with these transit changes, which we've also talked about. So that was the input they provided. They are obviously as interested in what the council sees as a way to move forward with this as the staff is. And they are are looking forward to your input tonight and and recommendation, hopefully with a a path forward, and then are ready to assist you in implementing that. So just the last slide I have, the next steps. If you were to adopt our staff recommendation, we would begin to procure replacement vehicles for our current fleet this summer with the grant funds we have in hand. We would begin discussions with the City of Glendale about how a co-location would might work and also what do we need to do to help them secure funding for the electrification with all the grant money that's moving around now. And then we would have to sit down and really, as a staff, and really start to develop a plan for how to potentially transition senior and disabled service to contracted, being very sensitive of our staff and how that is currently provided as well as the service that our staff provides to our existing seniors. And that's going to be, that's going to be a project in to itself and going to be involving some difficult decisions as well. But if we want to pursue the staff recommendation, we think that's part of the conversation. So that concludes my presentation, and I am available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Krisky. Lot of food for thought here, moving forward. Colleagues, any questions, comments for Mr. Krisky? Or just in general about the program or the presentation? Congressman Springer.
Thank you, Mr. Krisky, for your presentation. In terms of developing a plan for our senior and disabled, it could be just as good or better, could it not? If, you know, the drivers are consistent. I know that they really love the service. And one thing they they love about it is the personal, the the drivers.
Yes, I I think that could, that can still be preserved. I also think that with a change to contracted service, we get the ability to maybe do some more convenient scheduling and more convenient service offerings. So we are very good in the service model that we have, where we, you call the day before, you give your reservation time, we fit you in. We're very good on on not having to deny service. We're very good on getting you, getting to your door within, you know, five minutes of when your service pickup time is. But, you know, scheduling out into the future or scheduling regular rides or other sorts of things, we're not as good with. And I think contracted service with all the new software and new scheduling things you can do and getting even closer to almost an Uber-style type of dispatching is something we would, I think, would want to pursue if we were to do that with the idea that there's always someone to call because our clientele also, some, a certain part of our clientele also wants to be able to pick up the phone. We would still have to preserve that, too. But I think we could be, offer it more flexibly and give some more options with contracted service.
Okay, thank you. What's the status of the green route?
So that's on our work program to come before with, come before you with the recommendation for potential changes and/or possible elimination. Our commission's been talking about it. We are coming back to them with an actual service change hearing, probably at their May meeting. And this is the, this is the way we choose to implement for service change hearings, where we let the commission be the venue for the public input, where we present to them the options. We allow the public to weigh in. We do noticing. We do the whole thing. They provide all the input, discuss, provide a recommendation to you, and then we take it to you for a final decision. So that would probably be in, if we go in May with the commission, maybe, maybe summer, July, July-ish or August. summer, July, July-ish or August for the, for the council.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, councilmembers, anyone else? Councilmember Frudos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Criskie, but you didn't answer my question. Was my electric hop-on, hop-off trolley bus, which if Washington DC can do it and it was beautifully lit, Burbank can do it for its business district, so.
I think, it sounds like, I know this is one council member speaking, but one thing we can do if a majority wants it is we could bring back potentially as an option for the green route, inclusion of how a trolley would work with that. And let, let the commission talk about it and then let the council talk about it. If that's a majority decision of the council, we could definitely do that.
Outstanding. Thank you, thank you. Now you're giving me hope. All right. I, I agree with option three. I think the time has come that maybe this is another joint venture with Glendale. I mean, we had a success story when we got together with our helicopter police operations and how we saved money and did the joint operations. We've got good success with Glendale with our crime lab. We've got great mutual aid. I really, I really want to protect the bus, even though I'm kind of grumpy that it's always empty, but I don't want to lose transportation. I think we still have to keep thinking outside the box. And that's where the trolley comes in and try to do a fun way to get people out of their cars and, well, enough with that. But I, I really support option three, just to kind of start the conversation with my colleagues, of which way I'm kind of leaning toward this agenda item. Regarding our, our senior disabled service, I was wondering, using the past program and looking at the little blue metro vans that are now showing up in our neighborhoods for the first and last mile, I was wondering if, as you're looking at the option three, I really want to protect that senior bus transportation, but I agree with staff, we have to look at it differently. So I was wondering if that's something that within your department, you guys possibly thought about, if we could contract out with, with Metro on that first and last mile to help our seniors? I don't know what the rules are, just an idea, sir. And obviously we talked about the electric trolley bus type vehicle. And I've already chewed enough for your ear on that, I won't repeat it. But I think it's really great, you know, if we can move that forward. And that's where I stand with that. I'll let my colleagues and through the mayor, sir, continue. And that's just my thoughts to move the agenda forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, next, any, Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two quick questions for staff. So in the 11th slide and then in the staff report, there was discussion about the fact that we'll be purchasing six compressed natural gas buses this year. So I understand that we're going to have to go to electrification starting in 2026. Are we going to use the buses that we're purchasing this year? Are they going to be used for the entirety of their life? Or are we only going to use them for the next few years and then they get phased out early? Just a little bit interested about that.
Yes, so under the, under this plan, we would, they would be used for their full life, which is 12 years, 10 years. We actually stretch them even longer. Our oldest bus is 2003, believe it or not, and we've got six 2006s that are the ones that I'm really concerned about because you can't find parts from anymore. So, you know, when something breaks down, our MV was saying, we don't, our first step isn't to call the parts store, our first step is to call the junkyard. So those are the ones I'm really concerned about. And even if we contract our service a little bit or change it, we're still going to need those six. So under this plan, we would use those six. Now, one thing I didn't mention and is not a policy yet, but we have in parallel a greenhouse gas reduction plan, which we're starting our public outreach now. One goal in there to help ascertain or meet that goal is to actually accelerate electrification to 2030. So that would accelerate all this up by 10 years. And at that point, yes, some of the vehicles we're purchasing, seeing now, the fossil fuel vehicles would have a shortened lifespan because we're going to go to 2030. So that's, you know, eight, seven years. So that's not in this recommendation because the greenhouse gas reduction plan is also just out for public review. We haven't, we haven't waited through that, but just something to keep in mind if, as we talk about that plan. But under the 2040 plan, which is what we're required, we wouldn't need to shorten the life of those.
Okay, so, so forgive me, maybe this is a silly question, but if we're talking about purchasing a compressed natural gas bus that we're only going to use for eight years, it just seems like there's kind of a taxpayer loss and all of that? I mean, have you explored the option of just purchasing one of these BEBs early and seeing if we could work something out with Glendale so it could charge there?
So we haven't looked down that road very far, but we, we, in, in some conversations with MV, our current operator, they have talked about situations where they have done a pilot for their clients. The thing about maybe one bus is that the charging infrastructure is not that crazy stuff that you have to really commit to. It's, it's kind of like a beefed up Tesla supercharger, you know, fast charger, I think. And so they've, with some of their other clients, they have worked with them to install a single charger and run a single bus as a pilot. We don't know too much more about it than that, but if the council is interested in something like that, that is some recommendation you could give us and we, we could look at it. And, and then the trick is to work with Metro to see if we can convert some of that money with, for the CNG buses into a, into an electric pilot. Half the grant money may be difficult, half the grant money, it's a different funding source, maybe possible. But that's about as much as I can give you, Mr. Councilmember, on, on that at this time.
Okay, no, no, I appreciate it. And, oh, Amber Alert, sorry. I guess the other thing I would just say is, you know, that, that would certainly be my recommendation, you know, to the extent that we could be purchasing vehicles that we could use for the entirety of their life as opposed to some for only a fixed period, it just seems like the wisest use of taxpayer money to me, although I understand the grant funding limitations. The only other question I had is the Burbank bus. And I know Councilmember Frudos has harped on this for a long time and I agree with him. You know, I do go around town and I see them empty much of the time. Do we have any data on the ridership level right now?
We do, and I'm looking at it right now, in anticipation that there would be questions. So to give you a general idea, this is on the fixed route. At our height, about 12 years ago, we were over 300,000 rides a year. At one point even beyond that, we were probably touching 400,000. In the last, say, five years before the pandemic, we were hovering around 225 to 250,000 rides a year. The pandemic has really taken a hit to that. Our 2021 annual ridership that ended in December was only about 135. So we're still down, you know, whatever that percentage, 30, 40%, 30, 30 something percent off of our, our 2019 annual. It is slowly coming back, but it is, our service and specifics is very contingent on our office workers who are still not coming back, although maybe soon, and our MetroLink riders and MetroLink service, its ridership's off way is, you know, 80, 80% off. But part of that is because they also eviscerated all their trains, which they're just now starting to add back. And they'll be adding back a substantial number of trains in April, as I understand, about two thirds of their service will be restored. So I think between that and office workers coming back in the next, let's say, within over the next six months, that will drive, I think, our ridership back. Our pink route, as I think I've mentioned before, was doing, set to do gangbusters when we made our tweaks back in 2019, and then pandemic hit and of course all crashed. It's actually back to what it was roughly before we made those changes. So it was the most resilient and that's because that's the first route that we implemented in our service policies. And so I think that's why that route is doing so well. The other two, particularly the green, not so well. So I think our service is tied to office, which, office workers returning and MetroLink service resuming.
Got it. Thank you so much. So I'll just wrap up by just talking about the policy options. Based on that data, I, I just don't think that option one is justified. It's too significant of a cost to pursue. Number two, I, I have concerns about the reliability of relying on the outside vendor. And number four, as Councilmember Frudos says, it's just, it's, it's incongruent with our policy of mobility and trying to get people out of their car. So I would agree with option three. The thought I would leave you with is that, you know, as we look at the economies of scale, I would actually agree with a comment that we got via email tonight from our now commissioner, Mr. Dyson. I think that moving forward, we should continue to pursue every opportunity available to, to merge our operations or at least have the conversation with Glendale, to the extent that we can save cost and provide more efficient service. You know, maybe it starts with the transit facility, but down the road, I think that's something that we should pursue. We are next door neighbors and there's a lot of opportunity to cooperate together and cost share together. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Colleagues, we're going to have to, we've lost the signal of Councilmember Springer. So we're going to take a two to three, four minute break until we can bring her back on. All right. So everybody just stand by.
Evening. We are ready to go back from the, come back from the recess. If everybody can join us, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Thank you for coming back. Councilmember Springer, good to see you again. Let's see, we were just discussing, obviously, Councilmember Schultz, you just finished your questions with regards to this agenda item?
Yes, and Councilmember Springer, the Cliff Notes version is, I'm supportive of option three, just like Councilmember Frudos, and I would just encourage staff to look at further cooperation with Glendale down the line for cost sharing.
So everybody, oh, Council-
Thank you. I support option three also. I mean, the staff's recommendation.
Vice Mayor Anthony?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh yeah, I think option three is the best way to go, and if we don't have that, fall back on option two. To Councilmember Schultz's point, I believe two years ago, when I was chair of the Transportation Commission, Mr. Criskie, didn't we recommend deferring the purchase of two buses at that time?
Yes, we did. And so I have to remember, and if I'm wrong, we'll, we'll follow up, but we did defer it. And so now we have three buses that the council approved for some metro funding, but we haven't acted on. That's the older money. And then this newer money, the Measure M money, is the money that the COG has approved for us, but we've also been paused with it. And so based on your recommendation, the council's recommendation to move forward, we would come back to ask you to move on both of those grants. But yes, we did kind of put all the buses on hold, and I think the commission, as you're right, did weigh in to put it on hold because of some of these issues.
Yeah. And, and I remember at the time that discussion was, we were waiting for better buses to be built. We didn't want to buy a fossil fuel vehicle when we knew the technology was coming. We didn't want to buy a fossil fuel vehicle when we knew the technology was coming. Are we not there yet? Can we not just, like, like Councilmember Schultz pointed out, maybe get an interim electric vehicle and charge it somewhere else in the interim? Because we don't know what's gonna happen with the, you know, the greenhouse gas emission plan and the reductions. We may, you know, a year from now, be looking at a 2030 deadline. So, I mean, I understand that we can't sit on these buses, they're gonna break down, and that's a problem unto itself. But if we're gonna go out and we're gonna spend the money, is there no other option? Are we stuck with CNG? Is there anything viable that we can get that is electric? Is there like some old hydrogen fuel cell buses that people are just looking to get rid of, and we can use those in the interim? I mean, what is out there?
So that's the big, the big question with this, and why we wanted to put it out for discussion as part of our recommendation is, we could, as I mentioned to Councilmember Schultz, there, there is possibility of running a pilot for a single bus with, you know, limited charging infrastructure that we install at our leased facility that MV operates for us, and we can, you know, in theory, move it around as our, depending upon what our, who our contractor is and what the situation is. Beyond one, you're into the problem of what I mentioned with option one, which is you need a place to invest all the electrification infrastructure. There's just, beyond a pilot, I don't see how we can purchase or plan or implement all the electrification infrastructure for those buses without the problem of having our own station.
Can we, can we sell the CNG buses if they're six or seven years old? Like, can we get some money back on these things?
I mean, we, we would, you know, we would definitely dispose of them. I think they would go to auction, obviously, probably not a good market in California, but other states, they're would. So yes, we would get some money. It's very, you know, it's, you think a car's depreciation is bad when you buy a new car and it drops, you know, 30% when you drive it off the lot. Buses are really bad, so we're not gonna get a lot. The other thing, too, is, you know, this, the 2030 may not be a hard and fast thing. You may decide with the GG RP that, you know what, 2030 is our goal, but if, if six buses are 2032, or 2033, or 2034, because we want to run out their life and not have to replace them early, that's, that's a policy question that we should have with the GG RP. So maybe we, we kind of smooth it a little bit. We don't take, we don't retire them so early, but we try to still say close, as close as we can to 2030, because that's another policy we want to pursue. But yeah, there's no good answer to this, to this conundrum we're in with old vehicles, and that, and we're on the cusp of electrification.
Well, if we get at least one of the six, we have, you definitely, we need six. We can't stop at three. We gotta get all these guys.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm concerned with our fleet age. Just to let you know, we've got about six 2006s. We've got another six or seven 2009s. And then we have the new ones that we knew, that we bought in 2016. Those are, those are our best ones. And then we've got the little 2003, which actually, we still use sometimes. The other problem with those 06s and 09s is it's a, it's a poorer quality of bus. It's a lower tier, because we were, we were not as far along as we are now, whereas the newer buses and the replacement would be a higher class, more durable bus. So that's the other problem.
Well, would you feel comfortable if the council moved forward with only five, and we went to see if we could do a single bus pilot? Because--
I don't, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. We can't go too far on the CNG buses, because this is actually about electrification, so.
It's not on the agenda.
I don't, I don't know if we're actually revisiting that decision at this meeting.
Oh, I see. You're saying that before us today is only a recommendation to look at purchasing the CNGs. We're not, we're not greenlighting the purchase of the CNGs. Mr. City Attorney, is that what you're saying?
Tonight, tonight's agenda item is bus electrification feasibility study. It's not a procurement contract for CNG buses.
Okay, so then let me, let me see if this, if I can keep this within the realm of--
Well, we could ask Mr. Chriskey, was the decision already made to appropriate the funds for the CNG buses?
No. Council signed the MOU that allows the money, that metro, that allows Metro to appropriate the funds. We will need to procure local funds to front the cost and approve procurement. That has not happened yet.
At a later date.
At a later date.
Okay, so then let me ask this. When, when you come back, can you bring us an option for one of the buses to be purchased as a electric bus, to, to fund a pilot program? And the reason why I ask is, that may save us cost in the future by keeping that bus. So if that's a possibility, I'd like to see that option when we come back for the full purchase.
Any other questions, Vice Mayor?
No, that's it. Other than that, I'm okay with option number three, so I'll move that--
Hang on a minute, let me weigh in, if you don't mind.
Oh, yeah, you have a guy.
There you go. Thank you very much. You know, coming into this meeting, I was going for option four. I was there with that bus 10 years ago. Real pretty bus, but it wasn't cutting edge technology, right? And it just didn't work for us. And we haven't been very proactive when it comes to transportation in Burbank. I mean, we have a bus system that picks up people at the MetroLink, and Councilmember Frutos, you mentioned this before, picks up, picks up people at the MetroLink, takes them to the media district, okay? Picks them up at like five or six, and brings them back to the MetroLink. Nothing in the city, nothing, I mean, I don't see people jumping on that bus or waiting, waiting for our buses to take the bus, because they're getting out of their cars. I just haven't seen that. I've been here a long time. And since all these buses have been put on, on the streets, the Burbank bus, to my opinion, has not been very successful. We've been putting money down the dark hole. And now you're, we're asked, we're being asked to put more money, millions of dollars. I would just rather see Glendale, get an agreement with Glendale and say, bring your buses in here and provide the buses for our residents. Because they have a very proactive bus program over there. I mean, when I go over there and I see their buses, they, they're running. They're running, and they have people in them. That's the other thing. Pro, you know, pre-COVID, after COVID, during COVID, you know, the numbers don't lie. But, yeah, I just was very disappointed. And every time Councilmember Frutos mentioned it, I, I was in full agreement, because I started looking at them when you brought it to our attention, Mr. Councilmember Frutos. And you're right. If I'm with my wife, I would ask her, count how many people are in there. Don't count the driver, but just how many people are riding the bus. So I, you know, I'd rather see a $17 million savings than us having to put out $12 million every year. But that's just one council member's perspective. And it's unfortunate that, obviously, I, I see, I counted the votes already, so I know where we're going. I just hope that the, we cooperate and co-locate with Glendale, make it, make it as workable as possible. Have them come over into Burbank and provide some of their buses if they need to. Or if they have the capability of, put that on the table and have that. Can Glendale, can you provide several stops in Burbank? And make that the transition, the full circle from Burbank to Glendale and back. But, yeah, I just, it's just so much money that we're gonna be putting in. And there's still question about grants. We don't have all the money that, we're still researching it. There's a possibility, and there's a maybe here, you know, there's a hope over here. Nothing, I don't know. How much money do we have in hand, Mr. Chriskey?
For electrification, or just in general, with, with buses in general? Electrification, yeah, we don't, we, we don't have a plan, so we haven't been able to go after funds. We have about $4 million for the six buses, more or less, for the CNG.
And, and you know, the, about doing, discontinue all Burbank bus, I wouldn't want to discontinue the senior and disabled service. I would want to keep that as a, as a contracting service with a city, obviously, contract that out. Still provide the senior and disabled buses, but the other option, I mean, the other bus system, I just don't. Anyway, any other comments?
Yeah.
Yeah, Councilmember Springer?
Well, before, the, the pink route exceeded all expectations before the pandemic, and the pandemic just really stalled that, and it hasn't recovered. But it goes from the downtown Burbank MetroLink station to Universal. And, and you can do it in half an hour. I've done it in 20 minutes. And I think, you know, as the studios decide how they're going to work, you know, will they do hybrid, are they going to work remotely? But the extending that route was real successful bef, before the pandemic. And I don't know, Mr. Chriskey, do you, how is it now?
So it, it's not back to what it was, obviously, because there, everything's still down. But just to give you some perspective, before we made the pink route shifts, we were about between 55 and 6,500 rides a month. And now, on the pink route, we are back to about that amount, 6 to 6,800 rides a month. So we've recovered back to the pre-pink route shift. But we have not seen, the height of the pink route was almost 13,000 rides in, in January 2020.
All right, any other comments, questions? You know, and I just want to share with my colleagues, I mean, I'm a transportation guy. There's no question about it in my mind, throughout the years that I've been on council, that I'm pro-transportation. But there comes a time that you've got to, you know, you got to say, is this working? If it's not working, let's not go down that path. It's okay to go wrong, but it's not okay to stay wrong. You know, but in the spirit of cooperation, I, I count the votes, and I'm gonna go ahead and join my colleagues, in spite of the fact that I have, I have some issues. Yeah, Councilmember Frutos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree with you. When I originally looked at this in preparation for tonight, I was going with option four. And that's just discontinue all, because I always see the empty buses. But what got me to have a different open mind, as I continued to follow up with my questions with the city manager, option three kind of stood out, Mr. Mayor, just because at over five bucks a gallon, I think, I, I think, before I'm closed minded to get rid of the Burbank Blue Bus, I, I really want to work with the five of us together collaboratively to see how we can turn this around. And I think option five, trying something new, you're right, with Glendale, we've had successes in our other ones that, after a long, literally a long discussion with the city manager, and I, I expressed basically what you said, I'm tired of seeing empty buses. I think 12 million, you're right, it's a lot of money, Mr. Mayor. But when gas is up, you know, getting close to six bucks, and, you know, we all sat together, you and I worked together with our assembly member on public transportation, you know what, I, I really want to see how we can do with option three. But definitely, I just want you to know, I do, I do understand, and I appreciate it, because you're right, I do count those empty seats on the bus. But that's the only reason why, Mr. Mayor, I kind of had an open mind going into this agenda item on option three versus when I first read it and I first started to prepare for the meeting on this agenda, I was going with option four. But I, I like to try option three. City manager kind of answered my tough questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No, thank you very much. So is there a motion moving forward?
Mr. Mayor, I see it's just a review, so I guess the question for staff is, do they need anything more formal?
You have enough direction, Mr. Chriskey?
We do, we, you know, we were hoping for an approval to move with the staff recommendation, so if that can be done with just direction, then that's fine. Or if you want to take a, a motion on approving the plan, which is option three, but I'll defer to the city attorney on, we have, we definitely have direction from the discussion.
Okay. Vice Mayor Anthony?
Yeah, I would just move that, the council direct staff to move forward with option three, begin formal discussions with Glendale to co-locate the Burbank bus and the Glendale Beeline buses at the same facility, and coordinate on finding funds to upgrade the Glendale Transit Facility to accommodate BEBs and implement a phased transition to BEBs.
Councilmember Frutos, second, right? No?
Yes. May I ask the maker of the motion through the mayor, with your permission, to please add past program or something, so we continue to protect the disabled bus transportation, so they have direction and clearly come up with a better idea? How can we help the senior citizens and provide them the transportation that's so critical for the seniors and the disadvantaged in our community? You can add that to your motion?
So amended.
Then I'll second it.
Mr. Chriskey, doesn't, doesn't, with motion, policy motion number three, or recommendation number three, the senior and disabled service still stay intact, right?
It stays intact, but we work on the, the details for how we transition senior disabled to potentially contract it, and then, hey, by the addition proposed by Mr. Frutos, if the, if the original maker is approving of it, we would look at how our past low-income subsidy program could be used as a way to ensure that lower-income seniors and those with disabilities can get that service in, in a needed fashion, or potentially how we can help them use other metro services, such as Metro Micro or the, the on-demand service. I, I think if I'm interpreting the council member's motion--
Yeah, that's what it is. Now, Metro Micro has, I mean, you're restricted to what you can do with it right now.
Yes, it's, it, yes. So we, we'd have, we'd look into that and, and see, that's, and again, that's something that the commission talked about, too, is, can, can our seniors use Metro Micro? I think some of them could. I think it could be useful for some, but some that are more of a mobility-challenged, they may need another option. And that's, I think, the spirit of the amendment, we can look at all of that. Because I think the issue is making sure our seniors and disabled community have mobility options, and particularly making sure the low-income folks in those groups are not left in the cold. And so--
It's up to you to make it happen.
So we'll bring back some options.
Great.
Moving forward.
Madam City Clerk?
Vice Mayor Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Frutos?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
And Councilmember Springer?
Yes.
Mayor Telemontes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, colleagues. Moving on to the next agenda item, is the update on the City of Burbank homelessness efforts and annual progress report. Presenting the report is Bob Newman, administrative analyst in the Community Development Department. Mr. Newman, welcome. There you are. Bye there.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Telemontes, and members of city councils, Marcos Gonzalez, the Housing Development Manager with the Community Development Department. The purpose of this presentation, the council, is a brief annual update on our homeless efforts. And as you just mentioned, I wish to introduce you to Robert Newman, the city's homeless administrative analyst, who will provide tonight's presentation.
Well, thank you, Marcos, and what a delight to be here with all of you. Good evening. And I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen now. And folks, can you see the screen?
Yes.
It's not in presentation mode. There it goes.
Thank you. All right. Well, thank you, folks. Let's dive right in. And so homelessness is an extremely complex social dilemma, and that's nothing new to all of us, and it really impacts the quality of life in our community, both for the homeless and our non-homeless residents. Looking at the slide here, you may recall the slide of the Affordable Housing Puzzle in prior housing strategy discussions. The puzzle outlines the different areas that the council and staff have been addressing the housing imbalance, which obviously includes the homeless. And all while working for a safe, beautiful, and thriving community for all of us. So as you know, the city council adopted a three-year plan in 2018. Many of the goals achieved in the last three years were a result of the city council and your ongoing support in addressing homelessness, and I want to, want to thank you for that. And Burbank, out of that, has established an internal homeless group, with all the city departments having a seat at the table. And all this, you know, and more to come, as I will show you, expanding our strategic partnerships. And again, all of this being done with a very, very, very-- And again, all of this being done with a very, very, very limited financing. So uh, significant investments have been made to expand our resources and outreach, uh, mental health, storage facility, uh, homelessness prevention and public health. And uh, you know, the following slides, you know, outlines more of our our achievements um, over this uh, this past year. So the city uh, has created several strategic partnerships and collaboration across various systems to make significant strides in delivering services and housing to people experiencing homelessness across all demographics with Burbank's holistic humane approach in dealing with homelessness. So as you can see on this chart here, our award-winning outreach team has transitioned in 131 homeless individuals in a meaningful way with existing uh, pre pandemic programs. And then we also capitalize on some of the programs that were developed in the midst of the pandemic. And so you can see here, there's like a dozen uh, different categories and with which we've been able to transition uh, individuals off the street. So uh, the first strategy of that three-year homeless plan was a safe storage and transportation for the homeless. So the state storage opened up in October of last year to provide free storage containers for those in need. The Salvation Army operates a safe uh, storage and is a city partner in delivering services to the homeless. And you know, we'd like to thank Catherine Barker's office for supporting the safe. But partnerships are the key. And you'll see that throughout this uh, presentation. In the future, for unhoused individuals having access to a hot shower is a first step in reigniting a feeling of dignity and and fighting the vicious cycle of homelessness. And it's something I know very well from uh, working in downtown, that 15 simple minutes of peace, privacy and relaxation for most people, that is a daily ritual. For those living on the streets, it's an inconceivable privilege. So Burbank is seeking to provide a conceivable step by providing a mobile shower truck for our homeless members in the community. Uh, future needs uh, will include sustainable funding for operation and staff, staffing of this uh, vehicle beginning in 2023. So other fiscal impacts of homelessness, um, you know, creates expenditures that are unsustainable as they involve administrative and other costs that are unappropriated but are a critical component of serving the homeless. So to alleviate these costs, there's a need and advantage to proactively engaging and assisting homeless individuals who are high frequent users of public services, including emergency rooms and county programs. And we have set up an active collaboration with Province St. Joseph. And this uh, collaboration has allowed us to create an action-oriented network of health and service providers whose primary purpose is to deliver care and referrals to people experiencing homelessness. We also look forward to working with our LA County Public Health Partners. Future needs include uh, include additional support in mental health, substance use treatment programs and of course advocacy for conservatorships. So our award-winning uh, Street Plus Outreach Team was expanded by adding another homeless service liaison. So that makes a total of two now out there in the field throughout the city. In addition, a social worker uh, co-located with the central library, within the central library, and the Jaws and Adult Center was added uh, into the city due to a partnership with Library Services and Park and Recreation Department. And then, of course, uh, the exciting announcement regarding the launch of our Burbank 311 app. Uh, the mobile app has been designed to improve how residents and businesses and visitors obtain information, request services like bulky item pickup, street repairs and report homeless encampments. And uh, so we've been receiving uh, besides uh, the usual over the homeless information site over the website, we've also been getting them through the 311 app. So uh, we also did that homeless information video entitled The Power of Connecting that rests on the homeless page of our city's website. And some of our future needs in this realm include the addition of an intensive case manager to the outreach team with a primary focus on working with those that are most service-resistant in our homeless community. So we are also looking into ways to someday establish our own multidisciplinary team, which we will call HEAL. And the acronym HEAL stands for Homeless Experience At-Risk Acuity Levels. So that would really, really uh, be exciting when we can get uh, get that integrated into our matrix of services. The city's efforts to build and support temporary housing has been ongoing. Over the years, Burbank Housing Corporation, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development have helped build 19 transitional housing units for families, emancipated youth and victims fleeing from domestic violence. However, uh, we would all like to do more in this area. So one of those areas would be a tiny home village. And with the rising number of unhoused residents, Burbank is looking at a cost-effective way to shelter people first. In the near future, we hope to see more funding from Measure H, the Los Angeles Homeless Service Authority and other sources for integrating more case management, substance use counselors and outpatient treatment programs into our matrix of services. So homelessness um, is uh, much more visible throughout the city of Burbank and across the county. Just to touch on the home point in time count, during 2020 point in time count, there was 63,000 plus individuals experiencing homelessness. Of those, 72%, which is 46,000 plus, were unsheltered, meaning sleeping in cars, outdoors and other places. Burbank showed 291 people experiencing homeless. And we just completed our 2020 count. Um, no count in 2021 was conducted due to the pandemic. As a tool to engage with people living uh, in unsafe environmental uh, or endangering uh, conditions for others, the city has uh, enforces a nuisance ordinance that provides us with a legal process to address homeless encampments in a safe and humane manner. And this um, uh, process is reviewed by our internal homeless group, as I mentioned earlier. So in 2021, we connected uh, conducted 46 cleanups. And cleanups are just a tool in our toolbox to bring people indoors. This season's ordinance does not criminalize the homeless because it provides linkages to safe storage, housing and robust services. Several of our partners, including Caltrans, uh, LA County Sheriff's, LA Metro, Union Pacific, Department of Mental Health and all the other uh, service providers and service provider area too, um, have all, uh, we're all teaming up with, we all have the strategic alliance with. And with several of those partners I just mentioned, we conducted our largest cleanup to date with our partners under the Burbank Bridge just a few months ago that had been there for quite a long time. Also want to mention about winter shelter uh, beds. Um, you know, winter shelters uh, offer these beds as a temporary solution. Uh, but there's really a need to create more year-round crisis beds throughout LA County. And the way the city supports the regional homeless response is our commitment to homeless prevention wherever possible. This will ensure that when homelessness uh, does occur, the experience is rare, it's brief and it's non-reoccurring. In 2021, the city partnered with Home Again LA, that's their new name, formerly Family Promise of the Reducos, to operate a rapid rehousing program utilizing permanent local housing allocation funds. Home Again LA has assisted 23 households to exit homelessness just this year. Other partners include, again, the Los Angeles Homeless Service Authority and their homeless management information system, which we use daily. Future needs will include uh, the need to continue to fund this rapid rehousing program as well as the addition of an intensive case manager to help households who are exiting homeless situation and moving them indoors. So accessibility to affordable housing continues to be a priority in combating homelessness for Burbank and the region. In 2019, uh, the city council supported the construction of 12,000 units by 2035, mainly along the Interstate 5 freeway corridor, which includes downtown Burbank Airport District and parts of the media district's specific plan areas. To facilitate this uh, production, the city is utilizing municipal policies to create affordable housing. And some of these include building affordable housing uh, within new private developments through the development agreement uh, process. Accessory dwelling units, ADUs, approvals by the city's planning division, which will help expand Burbank's affordable housing stock. Updates to the city's density bonus and inclusionary housing ordinance, ordinances, excuse me, could result in uh, a consistent requirement of affordable housing for future developments. So all these efforts um, assist Burbank in working towards the city's share of the regional housing needs of 8,700 units in the next eight years. So let's uh, continue to uh, talk more about some of the future plans while integrating some of our ongoing efforts. And of course, uh, taking a comprehensive approach and a shelter-first approach. Um, so the city's approach in working with people who are unhoused is very hands-on, uh, very proactive. Daily, we attempt to meet with our unhoused neighbors wherever they may sleep or frequently visit. Our comprehensive uh, comprehensive approach starts with outreach, then transitions to a coordinated care plan, continuous wellness checks. Uh, and currently, the city contracts with Street Plus to conduct proactive outreach in our downtown business of Bruma District, downtown Metro League Station and citywide through our homeless service liaison team. The demand for these services continues to grow with the increase of homelessness throughout the region and the amount of time and effort it takes to build trusting relationships, which really is the key to commence the process. So Burbank believes it's important to shelter our unhoused while permanent housing solutions become available. We achieve this through uh, community partnerships, linking the unhoused's services, providing interim housing referrals. While housing first is a policy we support, there's no right or easy answer to addressing a person's unhoused situation. Therefore, we have sought a shelter-first, when possible, approach. To help balance our comprehensive approach, the city of Burbank Policeman's Health Evaluation Team, paired with a clinical social worker, responds to calls for mental illness and or substance abuse crises, uh, they conduct uh, mental health assessments, uh, work with Street Plus by coordinating mental health evaluations, crisis intervention and other services related to mental health. And it's important we address the mental health and addiction as we step forward to interim or permanent housing. And the Met Team is uh, uh, wonderful to work with. It's a great, great uh, partnership there between our outreach team, Street Plus, and the Met Team. So as we, you know, look uh, at our long-term solutions, okay? The city is in the process of renewing its homeless plan for the next five years, covering 2022 through 2027. So the plan will uh, consist of a action-oriented uh, strategic plan in reducing homelessness. And this plan will align with the regional strategies. The new homeless plan will be presented to council. So uh, get a chance to visit with you again in April of 2022. And the city is obviously seeking uh, funding opportunities to implement our homeless strategies. This includes applying for Measure H, other federal and state funding. And since the passage of Measure H, if I can underscore this, the city has received a total of $900,000 while we continue to contribute close to $9 million on an annual basis. So in conclusion, um, these various efforts in addressing homelessness through the implementation of our strategies is just one piece of that overall housing puzzle that I had displayed earlier in this uh, presentation. So I really want to thank you for the opportunity to present to all of you. And it's a real honor to work alongside of you. So, Mr. Mayor, that's it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. Very informative report. Uh, Mr. Gonzalez, thank you for being here as well. Uh, colleagues, any questions? Uh, the recommendation is to note and file. Councilmember Frutos?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a question for our legal scholar. I don't see him on television. Is he there?
Yeah, he's here.
Okay. My question is, as we're addressing our homeless plan in Burbank, it says, "Working for a safe, beautiful and thriving community for all." Um, I know you've been on top of the emails that we're getting from a neighborhood and a church and a and a pantry. And I get it, there's, there's very uh, a slippery slope between church and state, but it is impacting the safety of neighbors. What can be done in working with this, with this church? To say, if you're gonna have a food pantry, then the church should be open, people can get it. Because the current way of just leaving the food in in this pantry outside is now attracting the homeless folks that have, you know, some mental challenges. And now the residents are concerned for their safety where some people can't even go to their cars because a homeless person will stop them and place their body and rub it against the car. I mean, I've been following those emails. What can be done to help that, those residents in that neighborhood?
Well, um, because this isn't agendized for uh, the neighborhood that you're talking about, I can, I can address the question in generality. Uh, Mr. Newman touched upon it uh, regarding the city's nuisance procedures and the cleanup procedures uh, that uh, the city has carried out with uh, do notice, uh, storage of of uh, people's property. Uh, so the city has procedures in place. Um, I actually sat in on a meeting uh, about um, uh, one such issue you talk about. And and uh, I'm not sure there's enough evidence of a problem. And so uh, consistent with what Mr. Newman mentioned, there's a process, there's a committee, uh, the, all of the different functions that support the homeless services, uh, be it Met, Street Plus, Mr. Newman himself, uh, and the rest of the CDD staff, um, you know, they engage in these different circumstances and they determine whether there are conditions of a nuisance and then they carry out a plan for cleanup and abatement. Uh, I don't know that the conditions really, um, the actual conditions that have been reported by staff rise to that level. Uh, so um, the, the city has many tools. Um, you know, the first one is which, working with an entity that is providing services to the homeless uh, to help them manage those services. Um, uh, in the case that you mentioned, it's, it's food. And uh, it sounds like staff is engaged, staff is paying attention to the neighbors. Uh, Pat, staff is paying attention to the ministry needs of the use uh, of the church that's providing services uh, to the homeless and and maybe people who are housed and actually have nutrition needs. Um, there's evidence that it's actually used by by perhaps many stakeholders in the community. So I think by following that process and by using uh, the many um, the many tools that the city has in place, uh, Street Plus, uh, CDD staff, uh, BWP, the Met Team, I'm sorry, um, PD, Burbank, we've got so many acronyms, the Police Department. Um, it, it sounds like the full um, city team is engaged uh, to make sure that the community is safe. Uh, and so that process should continue. Uh, the same process that's in place for encampments, should uh, some group that's providing services to the homeless have negative uh, impacts, that same process that's in place uh, can, can be used for that. Uh, so that's, that's the most I can say. Now, if if there is a um, a nuisance being created, our office would participate with all of the stakeholders. Uh, and and I, I trust that the process that's been in place, that has worked successfully, that gives uh, those individu- those unhoused individuals in our community advance notice will work. Uh, and and also, I know that um, uh, that church that's in the, in the neighborhood also cares about the community and we should all be able to, to, to work together to protect the neighborhood and and I, I, at this point, all I can say is I trust the processes that are in And, and I, at this point, all I can say is I trust the processes that are in place, and I've heard that, that everyone is paying attention to that, those complaints.
There you go. You're muted. Okay.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. McDougal.
All right. Any other Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to staff, Mr. Newman, Mr. Gonzalez, great presentation. I just have two quick questions. So when you talk about rapid rehousing, it's a terrific program. I know we're all proud of it, a lot more cost-effective to prevent people from falling into a homeless situation. Do you foresee any opportunities for program expansion moving forward?
Thank you, Councilmember Schultz. I can start with that, expansion of the program. There is a, definitely a lot of funding that's available for trying to address homelessness upstream, and that's one of the major policies that's, we've been seeing from the governor as well as the County of Los Angeles with some money behind it. So we would definitely be interested in trying to expand that program here in Burbank.
Thank you. And my last question was, in one of your slides related to building temporary housing, there was a reference to a tiny homes village, and I was wondering what you could tell us about anything that's in the works about that right now? Are you looking at a particular location? What would be the timeline, number of beds that could be served, whatever you're able to share with us now?
So I will take on that one. Simone McFarland with CDD, thank you for the opportunity to answer that question. We are looking at a location for a possible tiny home village. We will be bringing that back to council. Our goal is to, next month, bring you the overall homeless plan, the new proposed plan, and have council bless that, and then follow that approval of that plan with a proposal for our tiny home village. And what we would be asking council for is the ability to move forward with the due diligence to do more studying of that site that we are looking at, the proposed site, and to see if it would meet the entitlement requirements and the CEQA requirements. And then also, we would be asking to do an RFP for the services. So we're hoping that you'll see that around May, right after we approve the homeless plan, hopefully approve it. Hopefully you'll like it, and then we'll move forward with that after.
Great. Looking forward to it. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? Vice Mayor Anthony?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good to see you, Bob. Thanks for coming and giving the report, and Marcus, for all the work that you're doing. I wanted to ask about slide number four on the presentation. If we could pull that up real quick.
Do you have that slide, Bob?
Yes, pulling it up now.
All right. Perfect. Maybe to zoom in a little bit.
Can you put it in presenter mode?
There you go. Councilmember.
Okay. So we got, we have really good numbers in the emergency shelter, the hotels, obviously reunification is really great, and then the temporary housing, the bridge housing. What is, can you just, for the people at home, what's the difference between emergency shelter and the temporary housing, the bridge housing?
So an emergency shelter is kind of like a facility, like the winter shelters, in which they house everybody with some distance in between, but they're generally, you know, just in a larger room, okay? Sharing the sleeping quarters, shared bathrooms, and then, of course, a place where they can eat, a cafeteria. A bridge housing is where you have some more, the common areas as well for eating, but you have a little more privacy in terms of your place. So you don't have a key or a door to your unit, but you do have a little cubicle, okay? And the, both places, all these places offer services, but on bridge housing, there's an opportunity for a case manager to work more intensively with an individual and to be able to transition them into housing. And so, but the real, they're similar, but the nuance is just, like I said, a little more, a little more privacy in, in the step-up model to eventually get to permanent housing.
Which, which, who's, which service providers do those two, the emergency shelter and the bridge housing? Who are we using for both of those?
Well, we have a great relationship with Hope of the Valley. So Hope of the Valley does emergency shelters. Hope of the Valley has some great bridge housing programs, and they also do tiny homes as well.
Okay. And then my other question, we did really good with the project Home and Room Key. What's going on with that? What, what do we see happening with that in the future? Is that sustainable? Is there good money being put into there? Do we have to worry about it going away? What do we predict with that?
Well, Project Room Key has transitioned primarily now into Project Home Key, and the governor is, definitely has some good numbers in his budget to, to continue that. This is a question of obviously finding the appropriate facilities that are, that are willing to utilize them for the homeless and are willing to, in some cases, sell their property accordingly. But again, this is, now, this is an individual, and it's kind of a step up from bridge housing because everybody does have their own room, right? And, and again, with robust case management and supportive services. So yeah, we, like I said, utilize, as I mentioned in the, in the PowerPoint, you know, a lot of the pre-pandemic programs that are already existing, but the minute the pandemic hit, and then there was a lot of these new programs that came down the pipeline during the pandemic, we really jumped on them, and that's why you see the number of 25 there.
And those hotels, are any of those in Burbank?
They are not.
So in Hope of the Valley, they're what, North Hollywood, Venice? Where are they at?
They cover most of the valley, but yes, they're in North Hollywood, and they go all the way where the emergency shelter is in Picoma.
Okay. So other than reunification, these are our three really good, successful programs, emergency shelter, bridge housing, the hotel projects. I guess my question is, in your opinion, if we were to do these three projects in the city limits, if, if Burbank were to create an emergency shelter and bridge housing, and we were to get some of our hotels to, to jump in on this program, would we see better numbers? Is it, is it likely that we would get more people to participate simply because so many of these projects are outside of our borders?
Mm-hmm. I think so. I think also too, if we go down just the third from the bottom, obviously to tiny homes, 15 people in, in tiny homes, and I think we would, because, you know, our holistic approach and, you know, constantly meeting with people, building that trust, and establishing that relationship, I think that it would be very effective to have some of these things in our infrastructure, to be able to get people off the street and transition them. So.
Can I just add to that answer? So one of the things I think is important is that we, Burbank do its part, right? So we have a duty to be a good player within the county area and to do our own part in helping provide some type of shelter, because as Mr. Newman indicated, all of these things that we're using currently are not within our city limits. So that doesn't mean that we do everything and go gangbusters right away, but we need to start moving forward with something, and that's what we're hoping to bring to you in May, is to talk about what that could look like, how big should it be, how do we serve Burbank homeless residents, and make sure that we're, we're helping the people that are local, and then still working with the rest of the, the communities and vigor, what we call the spa area, the service area that we work with, and other cities, and so that each city can provide for the homeless in their, their area. And so that'll be something that we talk more about in May when we come back.
Absolutely. I couldn't agree more. I'm just a little disappointed that, you know, we're paying eight or nine million dollars into Measure H, and we're only getting a fraction of that back. I'm hoping we can, you know, these numbers, these are good numbers, and the best numbers up there, I think, is where we can do the most, the most good. Thank you for this report. I appreciate all the work that you guys are doing.
Thank you for the update, and thank you for all you do.
Mr. Mayor, I think you're on mute.
There you go. You gotta press a button, and the green light comes on. Yes, so there's a recommendation to note and file. Can we take a vote and note and file? One, two, three, four, five. Okay. Unanimous. Thank you very much. Moving on to the next agenda item, the seventh and final report is the adoption of findings to continue virtual meetings for city council and all other city boards, commissions, and committees during the pandemic, and update on plan to return to in-person public meetings. Presenting the report is Viviana Garzon, administrative analyst in the City Managers' Department. Ms. Garzon, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Telemontes, Vice Mayor Anthony, and members of the city council. Viviana Garzon, administrative analyst in the City Managers' Office. So, two years later, here we are. The last day council held an in-person public meeting was March 17th, 2020, when Governor Newsom issued an executive order suspending parts of the Brown Act. Since April 7th of 2020, all council meetings, as well as boards, commissions, and committee meetings have been virtual.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay. Not great, but okay. Hello, anyone?
Okay. So the first part of this report is the adoption of findings to continue virtual meetings for city council and all other city boards, commissions, and committees for an additional 30 days per the requirements contained in the Assembly Bill 361. On September 30th, 2021, the California Legislature passed this bill amending the Brown Act to allow the continuation of virtual meetings. Pursuant to the act, council has adopted the findings through consent every 30 days since September. The good news is that this will likely be the last time council has to adopt these findings, which brings me to the second point. The second part of this report, which is a plan to resume in-person meetings, this part is one we are very much looking forward to, and we are very excited to share with you. Since the start of this month, as you all know, the County of Los Angeles has seen a significant decline in key metrics such as positivity rates and COVID-related hospitalizations, and moved to the lower-risk category of the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention Community Level Designation. The county also issued an updated health order that removed the mask mandate in public settings and also as K-12 schools. In addition, the order removed the requirement of pre-entry verification of vaccination or a negative COVID test for outdoor events. These changes, which are significant changes for all of us, now allow us to begin planning the safe return to in-person meetings. We're presenting a three-phase transition to resume in-person city council meetings as well as boards, commissions, and committee meetings. Mrs. McFarland, can you pull up the slide, please? So I have a visual for you that's going to go on screen so you can see our plan and Thank you. Okay. So three phases for city council meetings. Phase one, the next two meetings that we, we will have, which is April 5th and April 12th, mayor and city staff will be in the chambers. So we'll have the mayor and city staff that have items on the agenda here inside the chambers. Phase two, which includes the special meeting on April 18th, which is a Monday, and the regular council meeting on April 26th, which is also a budget meeting, council and city staff will be in the chamber. So that's all five council members and also city staff that have items on the agenda, which, because it's a budget meeting, more than likely, all of our executives will be here. And the third phase, May 3rd, we will resume in-person public meetings. So at that point on May 3rd, the chambers will be open to the public, and the public can join us. Today, we are not discussing what public comment will look like, that I will return, more than likely will be me, I will return on April 12th to provide council a recommendation for public comment when the in-person public meeting, meetings resume on May 3rd. So we should all be very proud of how quickly staff, with support from our council, created the process for the virtual meetings we are, which we are now all familiar with, still not perfect even after two years, but I think we've come a long way. After two years, it's definitely inspiring to say we can begin to plan the safe return to in-person meetings. Thank you for your time, and I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much for that report. It's, there's a light at the end of the tunnel.
Yes, there is.
It's nearby, hopefully. Colleagues, any questions, comments? Everybody says, all right, let's do it. Councilmember Schultz?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Mayor, and I just want to say, being one of the two new guys, I'm just really excited to have my first in-person meeting. Thank you to staff. I think this is a really well-thought-out plan. So with that, I move to adopt the findings to continue virtual meetings for the time being, and the plan to return to in-person public meetings.
Is there a second? Councilmember Springer?
Yeah, I'll second it.
All right. There's a motion and a second. Any other comments?
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Councilmember Springer?
Yes.
Councilmember Frutos?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Anthony?
Yes.
Mayor Telemontes?
Yes. Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Great job, colleagues. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Garzon, for the report. See, this is a time for brief council comments, including reporting on council committee assignments. Colleagues, who would like to start? Councilmember Frutos?
All right. Thank you. Going back to Wednesday, the 16th of February, I attended the Los Angeles County Civil Brand Commission for Institutional Inspections. Later on that evening, I attended the Police Commission meeting. On Thursday, February 17th, I attended the ribbon cutting for Mendocino Farms Sandwich Restaurant. They had a ribbon cutting there for new business. I also attended with Councilmember Springer, the Burbank Association of Realtors, a conversation with LA County Sheriff Alex Villanueva. On Friday, the 18th, I had a commission meeting for the Civil Brand Commission. On Wednesday, the 23rd, I attended Cookie with the Cop event, and then I attended with the mayor. I was a panelist at the virtual town hall meeting hosted by our assembly member Laura Freedon regarding safety in the Rancho area. On Saturday, February 26th, I attended the Burbank Arts Beautification Program with our mayor. And then from Monday, the 20, February 28th through Wednesday, March 2nd, I attended the American Public Power Association Policy Makers Council event, which was hosted at
Councilmember Frutos, you're muted for some reason.
Oh. Hello, hello? Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can.
It shows that I'm on. It shows that I'm on, Mr. Mayor. Hello, hello?
Okay. Go ahead. Continue.
Okay. Some of the activities, including meeting with folks from the Chief of Staff of different council members, from the Department of Energy, to meeting with our Congressman Adam Schiff. I attended a SCAPA virtual meeting with the House Subcommittee. I also attended a meeting in Senator Feinstein's office with her staffers, and also met with folks from the Energy Council, House and Energy Committees, and some of the stuff that I talked about for our city, which is important for all of us through policy, is greenhouse reductions. And when we're talking about that, it's kind of interesting that it was on the topic regarding the buses, because one of the things that I was presenting to the legislators is, as we're moving forward with electric vehicles, we really haven't addressed the big vehicles that are burning diesel, like our trash trucks, our emergency line workers when they're out there in the middle of the night putting up our power lines to get the power back on.
I also talked about transmission policy. We need transmission, you know, with the infrastructure from the federal government, financially, we really got to talk about building these infrastructures for transmission through a policy, and not just Burbank, but we're talking about one team, LA, Glendale, Pasadena, instead of traditional way that Burbank does this, Pasadena does their way. If we're really going to work on greenhouse gas reduction, we really got to work on a transmission policy, because, you know what, there's plenty of wind in the Dakotas, plenty of wind out in Oklahoma on a regular basis that, you know, we could get through some of the power. Plus, by reversing the power that I was working on, is, for example, we're always three to four hours late. So if there's a huge humidity heat wave in the East Coast, and we just happen to be having a really cooler type summer, we don't need as much power, we can send some of that natural, you know, solar power back to other states that need that power. I also talked about the natural gas supply, because even though we want to be 100% renewable, if we have a heat wave, our solar and our wind can only be so much. You got to have some type of open dialogue regarding natural gas. So I also participated in looking at green hydrogen type energy as we move into the future. I also talked about financing for tax exemption municipal bonds, because right now, the way the policy is, if you're Edison and all these private investor owned utilities, well, they get tax exempt municipal bonds. We at the at the public level, we don't get that. So I was working on that. And also tax incentives for clean energy, including buses. So hopefully, there could be something there for us. I also participated in disaster recovery and mutual aid, protecting the public power business model, municipal bond monetization, workforce development, risk management for public power. And I know one of the toughest things that we talk about is, you know, trying to, you know, you know, pay market value to keep the best workforce that we can to keep our utility up and running. And I had a really long conversation with the city of LA, and believe it or not, they're having the same problems that we in Burbank are. As soon as they train a lineman, you know what, they go to Edison. And you know, they're giving him, for the most part, they're getting like a $500, or actually, a $100 each day extra up to $500 voucher every day for coming to work under unusual circumstances. We at the public side can't keep up with that, but there definitely is a shortage of the workforce at the public utility level, just because we're public, so we can't keep up with Edison. Drought assistance for the Colorado River, because, you know, we were in the discussion, you know what, we're going to be impacted if there's not enough water in our dams to produce hydropower. And for the Burbank model, we're only receiving 2% of hydroelectric power. And then, obviously, continue the use of hydropower as clean energy. But enough said with that, I don't want to take too much time, but it was definitely a good working trip up there. My next scheduled trip to represent us and the utility will be in July. Moving forward, back on March 3, I attended a ribbon cutting with our Vice Mayor for California Fish Grill, and then I met with a community member who works for New York Life. On Wednesday, March 9, I attended with my colleague on the Police Commission as a liaison. We got invited to attend the retail theft event, stakeholders' conversation regarding folks on Magnolia Park and across the city. On March 11, I joined our mayor, attended the Kiwanis Club, their 100 year gala, and then I attended with our mayor, the Youth Leadership Program graduation on Saturday the 12. Yesterday, Monday, the 14, I participated as a judge at John Muir Middle School, and I had several students give speeches, but I had to take a note that I couldn't disclose anything of the speeches, because the contest is still going on, so I can't say more than that. And then this morning, in preparation for this current budget, I don't want to jump the gun, but I did spend a long Zoom meeting with our director to physically go over the upcoming utility budget, but I rather kind of remain quiet as we're still working. It's a fluid budget right now till it comes to the council, but I am preparing myself for this year's budget. And that is it. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and council members for my long reporting out today.
You know, very busy, very busy couple of weeks. Who's next, colleagues? Councilmember Schultz?
Well, that's a tough act to follow. Okay, so I'll be brief, Mr. Mayor. March 3, I attended the CEHD Committee meeting. The main thing to talk about there is the committee's continuing to talk about home ownership opportunities in terms of adding affordable housing, not just rental opportunities. There's a pretty good slide presentation. I'll forward that to the city manager, so it can be spread around, but I thought it was really informative, good information. The same day, I also attended the Elected Officials Sustainability Roundtable hosted by Supervisor Holly Mitchell and the county's Chief Sustainability Office. I'll also forward some slides, but we had representatives from cities across the Los Angeles County region talking about all the really innovative things that they're doing to promote sustainability. I'm happy to say that most of the things they talked about, we're already doing. There were a couple interesting suggestions in there, so I'll leave it to you to read and do with it what you will, but I think overall Burbank is really well poised where we're at. Always a little room for improvement, but, you know, nobody's perfect. As Councilmember Frutos said, I mentioned with him, March 9, I was at the retail theft event, very informative. Want to really give a shout out to one of our commissioners, Rama Kokovian, for really taking a lead on that and doing a fantastic job. I was with, I believe, the mayor, Councilmember Springer, and Councilmember Frutos at the Kiwanis Club of Burbank 100th Year Gala. Jay Leno was there. He was just as good as ever, and congratulations to Kiwanis. As a Rotarian, you set a really high bar, so we're going to have to match you next year with our 100th anniversary. And then lastly, over the last couple of weeks, I've been meeting with applicants for the Burbank Water and Power Board. Big shoes to fill, but I got to say, I'm very excited by what I've seen so far. That's everything, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Who's next? Couple of heavy hitters. Come on now, step forward. Councilmember Springer?
Yes, um, thank you. Attended SCAG Energy and Environment Committee, and I read to kindergarteners at McKinley Elementary School. I attended the Abilities Expo with the President of the Burbank Advisory Council on Disabilities, and I zoomed with an applicant for BWP Board. And we had our second meeting of the SCAG San Fernando Valley Housing Policy Leadership Academy, and the Burbank team is Maribel Leyland, Alex Arseniega, and Mary Couteau. And the ultimate goal is to come up with some effective housing policy. Attended the Park Board meeting and had a nice time with, at the Kiwanis, and attended the graduation, Youth Leadership, on Saturday morning. Zoomed Women's Caucus Membership Meeting, and last night, P-FLED. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Anthony?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was, on Thursday the 3, I saw Councilmember Frutos at the ribbon cutting for the California Fish Grill. That is a very interesting place, lots of healthy options, exactly what I've been looking for, and, you know, quick something to eat, and watching the waistline at the same time. I had a Zoom meeting on Friday, March 11, with the ladies who were running what's called Maroon Arts and Culture. That's that little sort of multi-use space behind Handy Market. They put on last year an event, the first official Burbank Juneteenth event last year, and they are looking to ramp that up again this year to do the the second annual, and to get sponsorship, and to really promote it. And so they have a, they have a pretty good game plan moving forward. I'm excited to see what they do with that. On Saturday was the Youth Leadership Program graduation. Those kids are just amazing. And yesterday, I met with the President of the Burbank City Employees Association, Griselda Cox. We talked a lot about what's going on with labor issues in the city. And then this morning, or this afternoon, I got a great rundown on the BWP budget from Don Lindell and Bob Lou. That's going to come back in April, but it was great to get a little bit of precursor to that as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Well, I'll just end it with a, I've got about three or four pages, I'm just trying to outdo. Anyway, yeah, I attended San Fernando Valley Service Council. I also attended the Loosa and Adha Committee, the SCAG Transportation Committee, League of California Cities General Membership Meeting was held. I was, I also read to McKinley Elementary School first grade class. And then once we get through the reading, and then I get into the fact that I retired as a firefighter, I saw a fire engine come down my street. It's really exciting when you talk to those young kids. I joined the Youth Leadership Program students for meet and greet, question and answer period up at the Stout Canyon Nature Center. I had a Zoom meeting with the Executive Director of the Chamber, Jamie Kaiser, and the Chair, Steve Mora, along with our City Manager and our Assistant City Manager. Let's see, we had a Zoom meeting, the City Manager and Mr. Prescott, regarding, the topic was discussing of middle income housing program, which is something very interesting. I also got the opportunity to meet the Armenian Ambassador and present him with a certificate from, from us, the council members. Let's see, what else? Virtual conversation with Assembly Member Friedman and others regarding the COVID-19 impact on college students. We had a second Loosa and Adha Committee. A lot of discussion points were being held there. I attended the Burbank Cultural Arts Commission meeting, Kiwanis Club of Burbank 100th Year Gala. I gave them a certificate on behalf of the City Council to the Centennial President from the Centennial Mayor. Let's see, we had a Youth Leadership Program graduation this past Saturday, and I also, yesterday, I had a Zoom meeting with General Manager Don Lindell and Bob Lou from Burbank Water and Power and discussed the budget at length. So that was it. Let's see, now's the time for introduction of additional agenda items. Do members of the council have any items to introduce? Councilmember Frutos?
Okay, Mr. City Manager, I've got three requests, so I hope you're ready, sir. I haven't been here in a couple of weeks, so I'm ready.
You are ready.
I'd like on a one step, two step for council discussion on unfunded needs to see where we're at for some time in the very far future, but I'd like to see a discussion on a white paper, or in this case, a council agenda item, possibly on the 134 freeway at that exit at Hollywood Boulevard. Welcome to the media capital of the world sign. So that's one agenda item.
Councilmember Frutos, can I just interrupt a little bit? We're past the 11 o'clock.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Continue, councilmembers, authority to continue?
Yes.
Good, all right.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
The second, the second agenda item, Mr. City Manager, I'd like to request that our BWP Director update the entire council of our legislative policy. That'll be a lot longer. I really want the council members to know exactly where we're headed legislatively at the federal level. It talks about the President's earmarks on the Make America Better Again. I really would like to give her the opportunity, because she really worked hard with me at the table in the discussion, so I don't want to cut her short. She really needs to have this discussion with the council.
Councilmember Frutos, you mean the General Manager?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The General Manager of our utility.
Right. You said Director, that's, that's why I couldn't, I couldn't figure out.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And then the last one is, on a one step, two step, the trolley bus, especially since we're replacing buses, I'd like the council to weigh in at a future agenda item, so I don't, I don't have our legal scholar give me the evil eye for falling out of the Brown Act and not agendizing it properly. And I got a smile out of our colleague. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Next, anyone else? Any items? You know, I've got one, Mr. City Manager, in regards to what impact has it, has this gas price problem throughout the country has impacted on Burbank throughout our citywide services?
Got it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on. We now adjourn the meeting to Tuesday, April 5, 2022, for a special meeting through an online meeting process. The public may view the meeting online or on television, and will be able to provide public comment in the following three ways. Bless you. One, by leaving a heat comment on the city webpage. Two, by emailing the City Council directly. Or three, by calling in directly to the City Council at 818-238-3335. Thank you and good night. Be safe out there.